So the planning commission have made, so it's kind of middle housing plus. And we're going to try and work through that in a fairly methodical way. To understand where we have consensus as a council. Where we still have more clarification work that needs to happen. Or where we don't have consensus and then what we're going to do about it as we go through the items that are. In planning ordinances, well, one has been across from the planning commission. The now the. We have been spending a fair amount of time talking about housing types and where we are required to have them, the changes that have been made there. That's been an interesting one because even after the planning commission finished. We did have additional law signed into order by Governor Kotek, which made some things planning commission delivered to us as optional. They they were no longer optional, they were now required, this has to do. With additional housing types that are now required in all. All places in the city. So for those of you who've been following along, I know that has been a little confusing because. Not everybody sits around and waits to see what Governor Kotek has signed into law, but some things, actually really important things for the state. Have been signed within the last month and that's reflected in the documents that we're using today. The other thing that's been. Interesting and part of our discussion has been. The. I think confusion is exactly the word, but. People are having a challenging time in some cases trying to understand how much of these requirements or how much of these. Are actually intended to make housing more affordable. And what what would affordable mean in our community? So we've also spent time. Talking about the origin of the housing laws and the changes that we're getting. The fact that it's intended to increase all types of housing, that's really the. The gist of it and it's not specifically in these these cases designed to specifically create. Housing at a certain price because all of this will still be driven by. The market and we've had a good example to compare that to contrast it, which is the. Example of the sixty units of housing apartments that are being built right now off the Kearney. Where you do have to be income qualified to rent those places. So this is not that kind of a situation. And there isn't regardless of how you feel about it, whether you think it's a good thing or not, there's nothing in here. That guarantees housing will be built at a certain price point. It's simply opening up the field to say more kinds of housing. Can be built in areas than was true in the past. So. This is a big topic and there's a lot of complexity to it, but some of it also was pretty simple and straightforward. And I don't didn't want to give a entire overview of it to begin with, because we've been doing that. But I thought it would be good at least set the stage in a couple of points before we begin today. So I'm gonna. I'm gonna ask for some feedback from council. On. The presence of our planning commissioners that are here. So. One of the things that's come up more than a, well, at least a couple of times as we've gotten closer to this finish line. Is people have wanted to hear. Directly from a couple of our planning commissioners because in addition to Marcy, who's been doing a great deal of good work for the city as a consultant. And in addition to Leila and her normal excellent work as a city manager. The planning commission has been in a kind of unique position in terms of perspective on this because they've been working on this for months and months. And they have found a fit to offer to us a recommendation that includes things that are required. And a lot of people have been learning about that because that was news to many people in the community. But they've also offered things that were not required and came as the result of a lot of discussion amongst the planning commission about. Why? Why we might want to have additional rules or changes in our setbacks, why we might want to do things with the way. With the size of the house, we might want to put a limit on the size of the square footage. And there's a couple of proposals in play for that, the maximum square footage for first dwelling to be three thousand square feet. And in addition to that. Another method of limiting things or keeping things tighter, which is the floor area ratio measure. So I'm thinking. I'm thinking maybe we should just kind of. Invite the commission, the two commissioners for here up, just talk through at a high level. For them, what was behind the additional requirements? And why they think they make sense for Manzanita based on the feedback they've received and. And we can then have some Q and A with them as council. And then we'll see where that takes us and then if all goes well, then we can start to work on our. Where are we just.
I think that's.
Is that okay?
That's a great idea and I think.
So.
I just think we, or I, based on some of the. Questions we're gonna try to get some consensus on may need more clarification from them or Leila. So I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Okay.
I'm good.
Yeah, okay. Right here. You had a planning commission meeting in here yet?
It just gets.
Were you sitting on it?
Yes.
And Leila mentioned Marcy's online, so she's available.
That's great. Is there any way we can see her?
Or answer her? She wants to be seen.
She's used to it.
Rearrange her schedule to me.
So you know, and I should say we we've also received additional comment, some letters as well as additional. Commentary that we get individually from members of the community. So that's been great to continue to get that. And there were some examples that were sent in the past week where people asked to be a part of the package. So those are all there for the. The public record as well. So. I appreciate you guys showing up on short notice. We only asked you yesterday, so I'm really glad and actually real glad you could be your person for this. So. And I know you have no routine worked out between the two of you about who does what here. So if I, let's just start with a broad question though, and maybe you could. Maybe you could. Without reenacting a hundred hours worth of meetings, maybe you could take us through kind of the logic that took you. Through to these additional recommendations for us. And by additional, I mean things beyond the required types and the required changes. Fair enough, sorry.
But yes. Thanks for inviting me. Here and explain. What the commission did because in all of the discussion that there seems to be some confusion. In the end, we did not actually do much anything. That we could have. It's all. In terms of types. Did most of it, we did do five things. For this community. Was it? Uh, been to Manhattan, I think this this local in two thousand and eighteen, but just to ensure the response to. Statewide housing shortage required all face cities. Twenty five thousand. To. Uh, change the zoning ordinances to allow middle housing in. All areas. They did. Clarify that that meant was the confusion. That that allows you to bring that means you had that middle house.
Can I ask you to speak out a little bit, Tom?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
It was then clear at the time that that meant you have had to have. In all parts of every areas residential use were just some in each. Um, in any debt. Manzanita isn't their base cities that didn't fare this. Until it did, two thousand and twenty three legislature amended that law to require that the city until accounting regardless of size. To comply with the middle house requirement it says. So. That's what set planning commission motion. The year to amend our commitment to allow housing. And. He did for the most part with the law then required we changed the zoning ordinance to allow middle housing in. Duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes and cottage clusters. Throughout our residential areas. The two additional things we did in our meetings is. We added another category of dwelling called quarter apartments. So cottage clusters defined by the law. As dwellings under nine thousand square feet. Array around common court. We added another category, which is basically cottage clusters. Attached, instead of attached, given. Four yard apartments, like cottage clusters that are attached. The other main change we made is response to that ambiguity about. Where you have to do that is we made the conclusion that. The new to this regulation, we probably have learned. We should. Allow them in some areas of the community. So we made it kind of a universal. Application of. Quarter million thousand votes. While we were meeting the legislature, the legislature committee could. And they amended the law again, so they did some way that. Influenced to what we did. So first of all, they changed the definition of products clusters to mean. Dwellings under nine thousand square feet array around a common border. Detached or attached. So basically they expanded their definition to include what we will call a quarter apartment. Uh, the other thing they did. Is that they changed where you have to have middle housing to. Areas only for residential use to. Every block or the person in residential zone. Which means. On every block anywhere that is known for residential use, which is. All of what we're calling MH one, MH two and most true. On any lot, person in there, you have to allow all of these types. Little house. So. That change in the law, which I didn't really anticipate, but it corresponds to what we did. So. What I'm saying is that at the end of the day, we have not given anything. That you are not required by law. To do now this this new amendment to the law took effect on July one. Uh, but you have to comply with it. January one.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven. So. I hear you're plagued, but. The common confusion that they. Planning commission is not far beyond whatever is required. It's simply not true. At the end of the day. At least in terms of types of laws, we are no farther than. Have to be. Really, we have to. As the legislature is making. Yes, I I make it. You know, Tom's right, they don't. Determine. Or both in the community as best as possible. And make sure that the housing will fit. Character and kind of scale of basically that we did recommend some adjustments. Uh, one adjustment was to. Three yard setback. To a smaller set. And that's to allow. More space to. Uh, another adjustment was in the. Uh, movement to what's called a floor area ratio or FAR, which is kind of godly good speed for. Trying to control the mass development. And especially as middle house became to some of its established neighborhoods. We felt it was not appropriate to have overscale buildings with the. And the empty ratio of point six five. So it's. Really is. Sixty hundred percent. Area law is the max. It's very common. In in my experience, in order to control. So it's the first that I've known. Now. Another aspect of what we suggested. Was currently in Manzanita lot, they really build about five thousand square foot house. It's a box. Uh, that beats the pay limit to this effect of where. Like pretty many of us see. It's sort of kind of point six. It's listed as suggestion. To limit size, steel structure to essentially. Square feet. Including. Which is a point six five. Uh, and the reason for that is that fearful that as. Things progress and it's apparently. Somewhat evident to the city. That someone could buy ten lots and build an almost ten thousand. Existence of that would. Overshadow. Kind of takes. Makes the reason. Suggestion that. And in our place. There isn't. Very rich house and the rest of the essentially role to. Be in my character, believe. The additional element, uh, which is the design. Yeah. Despite the. Be about, uh. First mass, really mass done. Which is. It's been well. It's trying to. Imagine building. Worstness, they could. Jared. You want to provoke. Bricks. And now the. Unfortunately, so to speak. Some guidelines can be based upon. Our city model. Patients to. To make sure that it's based upon the state's representation. What it's been, it's been fitted Manzanita even as best as possible. As an example. Per code would allow a fifty foot lot. Of buildings. Yeah, fifty foot line.
Fifty foot line.
Why, why, they think it's true. Uh, forty feet garage doors, no windows facing street. To match three and seven lots with that on a street. And what would be? That good. Uh, older person, they really didn't have. You know, that's why it's a very casual kind of. Range turns into powerhouses that. So the design guidelines are ridiculous. Code was really created in the, you know, sixties. At some time, like fifty mile an hour speed limits. Rage to get hurt. We just lowered our. Pounds twenty minutes. It'll like it a little bit instead of having fifty mile an hour. Because I. We kind of want to have walk. Name things that are focused, creating conference that are. So the point six five. Any lot. Be a small lot, fifteen hundred square feet or two thousand square feet is really urging. How that house. It's smaller. Tiny objects in front. Prove walkability, eyes on straight. Then worst. And more like. Favorite. Thinking. Cities. Into the, well, well, design guidelines are. articulation. So that's very, that's very. My experience. Very minimal compared to many other jurisdictions. So they did prevent some. Well, better. Uh, articulation, all street facings, so that's the start. What are the disparities that block them straight? You know, articulation, uh. Breaking elements of the design, so it's just not favoring thoughts. Uh, eyes on the street, these are things that you want to be. About fifty percent. So these be. Do. Uh, main entrance, main entrance based street. Only garage facing the street. Being main entrances. They need to. Straight based sun, which are very minor elements to that and you know, play. These are very modest. The science guy. It's really the change from that fifties model to the more the better. And promoting better. It's very. Something. I think those are really. Changes that. And. Try to limit the wall, especially. See to establish. Make sure that the middle. Least as least to string. It's people who are concerned. And what prevents no, that's what we basically have. You know, get. It can already develop. Um. Plan for training us. Character. Walking the. Uh, sanity. Be walking streets. And. And then they try to. Make sure the scale and then. That's cool.
Thank you. So I wonder if counselors have questions.
I'm gonna say like to me.
So let's just take a pause.
So I have a question that that, well, to first a comment. Uh, you, you. The whole planning commission put a lot of time. Into this process, which I think we all really appreciate. But what what I hear from the community and feel myself is that. The changes that you suggested will change the community. As a whole, I mean, these are pretty significant changes. We have a comprehensive plan. It is in the process of being completed as we speak. It will be completed by the end of next year. It will be a compilation of the community's desire to move forward. Why should we make changes that are? Not regulating. Now, why? Why is it not a good idea to wait until we get this comprehensive? Feeling from the plan from the community. That will certainly go up to the planning commission to to emphasize. Why do it now?
Well, this change is happening. Even the year and a half, they're talking about comprehensive plan, which is a pretty. It's put in place, but what I hear. In the six years that I've been, it's a lot of. Concern and consternation. And surprise about the pace of change that has been occurring over the period. Uh. The community is is growing. More peak income here. It's probably the least upset. For for retirement, yeah. The changes preceding the pace, the price of housing shall. You know, it's been. Six years, price of my home. And I asked for my knowledge, uh, so. And I think all of those things concerning people now, they would like to see some of these things with those. Before, before the horse is out of the park. Oh, so and the thing is, most of what. As I said at first. On the types of building side, we're doing what you have.
Right, we're not.
Some of the design stuff that that. I'm a lawyer, but he goes there. And I just talked about the design stuff. That's intending to keep. What we have now in place. Until maybe the comprehensive access will not use entirely different direction with it. What you have here now is. It's a village lot. We're not here, here, or less. And and most of these changes. On the design side to me are intended to at least keep things this way. For now, for a period of time and maybe get a comprehensive plan oversight. Yeah, we still like that one. We like the village feel. We don't want this to be down. Stop, you know. Best of this to be. Build big, huge. Oversized things. Uh. If comprehensive plan goes in that direction, it's just build what you want, wherever you want, as big as you want. However, you. Okay, fine. I don't think that's what you really now. In the eye of these. And that is changes now, they only hold things in place until we decide.
I appreciate that answer, Tom. I'd be really interested from Burt. Um, since you talked about the design issues that were really important. If you were to look. At the options that you presented to us and and. Well, we could comment around, but if you were to look at the options and you could choose three. Options that really were critical from a design standpoint. To have the consistency of the feel of Manzanita. What would those, what would those be?
Well, I I proposed a tourist standard, so the mission.
So you get three other choices.
Yeah.
I think the. Just to give flexibility. And not stay too late. Particularly, I think that's a core. And also. Future renters be able to. Create heritage place. Pretty key. So. So there's many options for each of those items. You don't have to be. Exactly. Exactly that. You need to do a few things to this rest straight. That's the. Team, I believe that in my view. Since. Just. So. The house itself is present. And. And this is really, and they have double fuss, they have that. You don't want this to be hands stained. Places like that. Snout houses, so really a term. But the snap house happens in many communities and what that is is that you'll have a street of parages. And you have to. Where's the front? Where's the front? You can't hang. So the, the, these guidelines are. Keep the carriage. Man's the. I'm very responsible. And and keep the bulk and scale. Man is. So. Are there three that I want? Uh, I'm a lot of the impact that I should choose. Which that's what it's like.
Okay. I know we're not supposed to interrupt, but the people online texting us.
Can't hear.
They can't hear, yeah. I I think you're just, so I think you're just, you're gonna have to speak up a little bit, and this is something that we'll remedy next.
One of the times is you raise your.
Time frame, so.
Hold on a minute.
Now everybody should be able to hear you. Sorry.
So when you get back there where you can monitor it. Well, we have our two informal testers there. Talk for a minute and let's just see if that's improved the case now.
Can I have my three choices?
Yeah.
Bert talked about some of the. But your pure design stuff, but the, the, the things that go along with. Middle housing, allowing more housing are stuff like the setback requirements and. Things of that nature and things in the. Reduction on off-street. Working, I mean. Those are the things that will enable that type of house, okay? If if you want to have more middle housing or just housing in general. But you, you maintain strict requirements for off-street parking, okay? It isn't going to happen. I mean, that's, that's the reason the legislature is, is passed laws requiring cities around the state. To relax their parking requirements because. Those requirements are what communities use to block. More. And denser housing, because you can't build it if you can't, if you have to put in parking.
I would just caution and say, perhaps other communities have done that. I don't think that's the, I don't think you can attribute motive to that particular. Legislation here with the size of streets that we have and the, the way the, the town was designed. And I don't want to get into a debate with you. I just.
Not.
That's a judgment.
Not. Saying that about Manzanita, I view the different. I spent part of my time in Portland and some neighborhoods I know there. Do use it for that purpose, but in any event, if you want to more have more housing, it helps to decrease. The off-street parking. That'd be one of my. Design changes.
That was helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, who'd like to go next?
Uh, yeah, so. So very glad that you, uh. Judge the changes that you're advocating. In terms of wanting to maintain that. Friendliness and the character and the walkability and the safety of the community, and ironically, that's pretty much the list of. Adjectives. People have been sharing with us in. Taking issue with some of the changes. They're afraid that some of the changes will. Impact adversely the character and walkability and safety of the community, so. So that's what I think the council is trying to reconcile. The fact that there are these divergent views. On whether the changes be positive or negative, uh, and granted, a lot of the changes are going to happen. Regardless, because we were locked in, we have to make certain changes. Um, for me, I would say, at least in terms of folks that have been talking to me. Uh, the, the biggest areas of concern are. The parking issue, Tom, which you just talked about, uh. The, uh. Lot size issue, um. I'm not, you know, I, I want very much to defer to the expertise on the planning commission when it comes to things like. If they are in, in, in design requirements, but I do think it's important for us to understand, I mean. We're doing all this work. You did all that work primarily because of the model housing. Legislation, um, model housing legislation, uh, excuse me, middle housing. Legislation. That does have specific design codes for middle housing, right? That were required.
Yeah, I think Marcy can probably address that best. She's the expert of the law, but.
Right.
With that.
So the, the planning commission proposal, as I understand it. Includes design standards that were required for middle housing. And design standards that you are suggesting for all. Nancy has.
Marcy, could you please speak to that?
Uh, sure, there's a, there are some limited. In the large city model code, design standards that can be applied to middle housing. It can also be applied to all housing. Um, including single dwellings and middle housing, but there's. Another option too, which is to have a. Uh, some additional standards and those would apply to, they would have to apply to all housing. If you have additional standards, you can't apply them to middle housing only and exempt single dwelling housing. There's actually another choice too, which is to not have any design standards at all.
So I don't know whether we're gonna drill down on specific topics with these calls, or do you want to do that? Comprehensive through the list.
Like to get a read from the council first and then we'll, we'll start to look through the list.
All right.
You guys have got till ten o'clock tonight or so, you know? I know I don't.
It's too hot in Portland to go.
Well, that's kind of, we'll take what we can get. Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. Um, so I want to thank you both for coming. Um, we've received some letters, uh, as some of the other counselors have already referred to, and one of them specifically asked. That we have, uh, members of the planning commission come and talk about your vision. For what this is gonna look like when all of this density. Is in, in the way that you've proposed it to us. Um, so, you know, Tommy, you were talking about still a village feel. And yet. I'm still having a hard time getting my mind wrapped around. How it still has that village feel when we increase density. Can you talk to that? It village is, in my view, mostly smaller dwellings. And we are in the middle housing, trying to increase the availability. Of smaller dwellings, um. When you lose the village feel, uh. I think of Gerhard. Okay, and that's just a bunch of big houses on big lots. Some of them were two smaller lots put together. The existing housing torn down. My grandfather had a house there. Small one many years ago. It's torn down and somebody builds something palatial. Uh. That's how you lose the village feel. I don't think you lose the village feel by creating the opportunity for smaller dwellings. To be built here and in, in terms of the, the vision. I, I don't really have one, so I'm not trying to steer Manzanita in any direction. The market is going to take us where the market is going to take us. Um. Wh- what we're just trying to do with this code is create the opportunity for people to build. More and different types of housing than they're permitted to do now. Um, if they want to. No one's get, no one's going to make you on your lot that you have to build a fourplex. You can build a big house if you want. Within, you know, the size limitations, but you can build a single family home if you want. But if you want to build something smaller, if you want to build cart courtyard apartments, cottage clusters, something of that nature, you're giving, we're, we're giving you the opportunity to do that. And I think this community, um. Will want those things. We, we, we need them for. Affordable housing. That's one thing. Smaller dwellings are generally cheaper. If we want to attract. Be able to recruit employees for city government, for the businesses here, so that we can open the restaurants full time. We want to have people be able to work here. They need a place to live. And they need smaller places because smaller places are more affordable than bigger places. On top of that, this is a, a. In large part of retirement community. And as people age, they want something generally smaller. People want to downsize. I, I, my wife and I hope to retire here to our house, but our house has four terraces in the backyard. And three stairs on the inside. I can imagine a few years' time, we're not going to be, want to go up and down the stairs. We're not going to want that big yard. We're gonna want to have someplace smaller. Wouldn't it be nice if there was available somewhere in the town? That we could then, at our next stage in life, we could move to courtyard apartment. No big yard to maintain. Neighbors to look out for you. To help out, bring in the groceries, do all sorts of things I. Aside from affordability for workforce housing, I think there are people in this community with, that would like the option of smaller dwellings. Um, so they can move into one. Uh, so. I. And that seems to me to be a village where we have people. Of all ages, all incomes. All races and stuff, and it's not just. A, a city that has a bunch of big expensive houses. For the few people that can still afford it. That's not a village to me.
So. Bert, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I. Right on with, uh, what Tom's saying and the village character, I think is very important, and I would actually encourage through the, uh. Comprehensive plan processes to look at even more, uh, advanced design guidelines. And these are the very basic design guidelines, trying to promote walkability, scale, safety. Those kinds of things, and really only applies to the front facade along the street. You know, or in a courtyard housing context facing a court and such, so. Uh, yeah, the reason I love Manzanita, so it's character and scale. Uh, you know, I hate seaside, excuse me seaside. Um, you know, I think, uh, what I'm seeing is that that change is happening. And without, uh, things in place to keep the bulk and scale of these buildings, uh, more in line with what we're used to. And the character more in line with what we're used to, we're gonna lose it. And so we, uh, a comprehensive plan process will take a year and a half or two years, let's say. Uh, ordinances will follow another year, maybe or later. So you're talking about a three-year window here where a lot of not-so-good stuff could happen. And if we're gonna want to grow with grace, keep the village character, I think these are very important, uh.
You know, the thing that I'm most concerned about isn't so much. A plan development taking place as much as what happens on some of these, the variety of lots that are sprinkled. Uh, throughout the city, in the neighborhoods, all established neighborhoods already. Um, the infill house. And taking, you know, something that all, all of a sudden, used to be considered a single lot and turning it into four. Um, I don't know how that still works into my vision of a village.
Well, it produces smaller housing that's more in scale with what's, uh, uh, you would think of as a village. The other advantage of, uh, smaller lots is ownership. And, uh, if you want to promote ownership for, you know, there's once again, no guarantee that any of these houses will be priced within reach. But a lot promotes ownership. Currently in Manzanita, if you have a duplex, you actually have to have a condominium. And you all know the challenges with condominiums in terms of insurance and other issues associated with condominium. So a townhouse, uh, in terms of promoting a middle housing is a very good example. Of common wall housing. Sitting on an individual lot that is not a condominium. Insurance financing, all sorts of other things, uh, that were dramatically different between a fee simple lot. And the condominium, so that's the reason you really want to have small lots.
There, there's some middle housing present already on Cherry Street up on, on the ridge. Um, and there are townhomes. What is that? First Street? Yeah, I mean. I walk past it all the time. I walked past it on the way here today. I didn't look at that and go, wow, this is changing the character of the neighborhood. I thought it fit in. Appropriately, um. And. I think these things can too, but, but, you know, again, to circle back. You don't, you don't have any choice about that. The, the law says you have, if there's a lot. Someone wants to turn it into a fourplex, they can, and once it's turned into a fourplex, then there is also requirement for. Partitioning it, turning into separate lots so that they can be sold off and people can have homeownership in it. That is permitted. Whatever anyone wants in this room or doesn't want, it's, whether it's going to happen, I. I couldn't tell you, uh. Probably, maybe not, maybe, maybe the prices here have gotten to the point where nobody's, that's just not feasible. At least allowing it. You know, one of the things that I find engaging about what I see in building styles around town is, um. The opportunity for diversity. Um, I look at my own home and if I tried to build that house now. Uh, I wouldn't be able to meet the design guidelines. Um, and yet I consider my house really unique and very Manzanita-ish. Um, so, uh, we've got a main entryway that's down a flight of stairs. Uh, that you have to go alongside the garage to get to. Um, and, um. So, um. And then I look at, you know, what you're talking about, the people focus versus car focus. Um, and I know it's mandatory, we're going to have street parking, but I'm imagining walking down the street, looking at nothing but cars. Um.
Or garage doors if you don't do something about that.
Yeah. You know, the, the thing about parking, which is.
Sorry, I'm losing the thread here. Can I keep going? Thanks. Did you, and let's try and stay focused. It's good to, it's good to for today. To remind ourselves of what's required, but probably not to go too far down that path because it's required, so if we can stay focused. With these two gentlemen on the optional things that we have to decide on, that'd be great.
And I'm done. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Good. Brad, anything?
Um, I think mine are more some general comments. I believe my more specific questions will come as we go through the individual items. But I tried to keep in mind in looking at this, trying to make decisions, that middle housing. The purpose of it was to increase housing, housing types and density. And it's also protecting environmental. Outside of here, the forest and farmland, so it's not impeding on that. Um, to expand on Tom's comments. As the city continues to grow, regardless of this, it's going to happen. The city is going to grow, but as we age as our population age. We're going to need more services and we're running for people to provide those. That means we need more housing.
And, and, and I agree, smaller house and a smaller lot would. Generally be more affordable. It doesn't mean that it necessarily would be. If you got a fifty by hundred lot versus. A twenty-five by fifty lot, that's. Simple math, quarter of the price. Um. An example that we saw in a letter was. Uh, there's a family that owns a lot with house and sort of a separate house that has a bedroom in. You can't currently. Technically live in that or have it separate because you're not allowed to have a kitchen unless it's a duplex. And the sentiment of this person was, when I retire, my sister wants to live in the house that's there. I want to be able to remodel this house, put a kitchen and live in it. And unless they were able to have a smaller lot. They couldn't do that. Then the design guidelines, I don't feel that they're. Then the design guidelines, I don't feel that they're that restrictive. They're more broad. They're saying things like, you guys mentioned, so just having a garage door. My house, for example, we have a window at the top. It's a little storage area, but from the street, you don't see just a garage door. So I don't feel like someone's saying it has to be this kind of window. It has to be this specific. I think as you both mentioned, you try to make those guidelines more broad so you have choices. So that's sort of where my reasoning and research and thinking about this generally came from.
Any comment? Not required if you don't want to, but just any response?
No, I, um, you know, it, the, the changes, if they they followed, if they happen, you know, people start building middle housing, it will increase the density, but the goal here isn't density for the sake of density. It's because it will be a good thing for the community to have more housing options. And it will also have the subsidiary benefit that the more people that are living here, uh, the fewer, there's less demand to, to grow outside, to sprawl into the adjoining environments, um, which can be expensive too, to, to build services out there. So, but, but we're not doing this just because these, these ideas weren't proposed just because people want more dense living arrangements. It's because they want, they want more options for, for places to live and, and Manzanita, I think, needs to have more than it does now. You know, uh, two weeks ago I was fishing in Eastern Oregon and I stayed in a small town over there. It will remain nameless. Lovely setting, declining in population. It's gone down 25% in the last 10 years because the lumber mill moved out of town. Okay. They don't have a middle housing problem. They've got ample housing because there's nobody that wants to live there and people are leaving. The town is not thriving. Manzanita seems to me to be thriving. People want to come here. People want to work here. People want to live here. We need to find a way to accommodate all of the variety of living options. Residences that they want for different types of people. And, and the whole goal here is to provide those opportunities.
Thank you. So I'm going to make a shift. Counselors have got a couple of documents to work with. They were drawn from prior sessions that we've had and one additional one that I did for this meeting today. So, um, what I'd like to do is take us through the, the housing types comparison table and the draft parking standards table to begin with. And then I'm going to switch to the one pager, the one point two pager, uh, that you got today that are the, um, additional, uh, additional report, excuse me, additional recommendations, most of which are not required, which we've touched on quite a bit directly and indirectly in our conversation with the commissioners here today. So, uh, and then we'll see where we are with that. Four o'clock. So we'll see how far we get on that. And then we go to the zoning maps as the next thing. So the goal here would be, and it'll be a little more structured than we normally are up here. What I'd like to do is go item by item and ask if I can get, um, a feel for, for not voting today. It's a work session, but get a feel from, uh, all the counselors and myself and where we're landing on this. And I'd, it's tempting and all these things to qualify, kind of, but this and this, I'd like you, I'm going to try and work to focus you to get to yes, no, I don't know. If we land on, I don't know, I'd like to ask you what it'll take to get you to, to an answer, which is a strict thing for me to do myself because I'm the one who has hardest time with this sometimes. So make sure I, make sure I hold the same standard as we go through. Jerry, you're officially required to do that. Karen is the standard. So, um, I would like to request, if it's not too much of an imposition, I'd like to request for you two guys just to stay right there. And then if we need a point, have a point of clarification that Marcy can help with online, Leila can help with from her chair, or you two could help with them. We've got you right here and we can answer it right away. It's as opposed to a follow-up. Is that okay with everybody? Okay. I'm going to say one more thing because I'll be, be too tired to say it in about an hour, but this, um, this has been very helpful, but, but I want to say it's helpful in the way that adding another layer to something helps you. So we couldn't have had the conversation and the back and forth that we've had so far with the planning commissioners, if we hadn't had all the sessions that led up to this, if we hadn't had the work sessions with Leila and with Marcy, if we hadn't ourselves gone through a con, a really continuous education process of trying to understand this and learn it so that we could be comfortable voting. So I think this just represents another good, I don't know if I was making a cake, another good layer to fold in or something. You come up with your own analogy, but it's been really helpful for my thinking, um, today. And I want to thank everybody for that. Okay. So we start with housing types comparison. And again, I'm going to ask for every counselor as well as our city manager and planning commissioners. Raise your hand properly. If I make a mistake, if I misunderstand something, if I'm still learning, I need to be corrected. So all good there, I hope.
Actually, another document won't seem very relevant.
Uh, no, this is a document and it, I guess it's available online. I will talk it through and we can. It was not. Okay. Um, could we quickly get some copies of that made for people here? Nancy, would that be possible? Just do this and could I, have you do that while we start on the other thing? It's my. Yeah. Yeah, that's great. Okay. So when it comes to the house, and we do have some extra, we do have a few extra of these up here, it was available online. If anybody does need one to follow, we've got them. Thank you, Nancy. So the housing type comparison table basically outlines, although we can make an adjustment to it based on what we talked about today, basically outlines everything that's required for us. So everything, uh, all the required types, the single-family dwelling, accessory dwelling unit, duplex, triplex, quadplex, townhouse, cottage, cluster. But as I understand now from the conversation we had with, uh, commissioners, that cottage cluster has actually now been redefined and it now includes, and now it's become what was proposed as courtyard apartment. So we can, sorry.
So that is, I, I was just interested.
So it's dark green now instead of, uh?
Well, what I, what I heard and, and perhaps planning commissioners or Marcy could check my assumption. What I heard that was what we had referred to as optional, a courtyard apartment is now actually in the, the state redefinition of cottage cluster, that courtyard apartment is now effectively become cottage cluster and is required.
The, the new law
Yeah, the new.
Requires that, but it's in the process of taking effect. So I, my understanding is that you have to com, you have to comply with that by January one.
Twenty twenty seven.
So at this moment, it's not, not the same thing, but it will still be.
A moment, yeah.
But for our decision-making process, we should consider cottage cluster and courtyard apartment as one in the same.
Well, I would say it's going to head that way. And I don't see, uh, my opinion would be, doesn't make sense for us to hold off on something that's going to be inevitable anyways. We should just go ahead and get it done. So the only two things that are actually optional for us are small apartment and the mixed-use residential plus commercial in all zones. So let me poll, uh, let me poll council right now. So small apartment, starting with Brad, would you say yes to that? No to that? Or I don't know?
Yes.
Would say yes to that? Okay, Linda?
Yes.
I'm a no. Jerry?
Uh, I need, I, I think almost all of these, I need to understand better the reference to in the final column to exceeding the minimum lot requirement. So, you know, as, as above, where it says, uh, you know, in all zones with our single-family houses on five thousand square feet or, or greater, well, that is easy to. Uh, but then in the planning commissions column, we refer to exceeding the minimum lot requirement. So I think that's particularly important on a small par, pardon me. Just sorry, this deepened the process.
No.
Not to understand what that means.
The footnote number five, I'll clarify that for you.
Footnote number five simply tells me that I probably shouldn't worry about it because, uh, as practical matter, it's not going to happen, but that's.
Except on larger lots or lots that are combined. Yeah.
I cannot just dismiss, uh, you know, concerns based on the possibility that that may not happen as, you know, as we've heard, we're trying to avoid bad things from happening. So I just want to make sure, you know, it, small apartments can be what, up from, uh, up to 12 units, you're talking about?
Eight.
Is that the reference eight? Let's just clarify that. I'm not going to answer it because I'm, I don't want to go from memory.
That's, it's not the number eight.
Yes. So what is the, what is the number, what is the number of units that's considered the minimum for small apartments?
It's driven by the lot size. So, you know, planning commission approved a 60-unit projects on a three-acre, four-acre site.
Okay, that was under a.
Brad?
So if I, I guess what I need to know, simply put, is if I want to build a small apartment building with five units, up to 12 units, I think, whatever, how big a lot do I need? How big a lot do I need for a small apartment? And I, I can't tell that.
Yeah, maybe, or Marcy can answer that. I will say though, that any allowable type of Marcy can correct me if I'm wrong, but has to have clear and objective standards and a PUD system doesn't do that.
Um, we have a couple of things going on. Go ahead, Marcy.
An apartment building, since it's allowable housing type in each of the three proposed zones, it would be allowed on any lot size. It's just that it most likely won't fit. Um, it's subject to all of the building envelope standards that every other housing type is subject to. So if someone's kind of a good designer and has the right lot size, they'll be able to build an apartment building. Otherwise, it won't fit. It's, that's all I'll say.
I guess at this point, I think for, because of the uncertainty, I would rather say, uh, no than yes. Uh, I, I mean, I think one of the things we're all going to get to learn from this development in Oregon housing is how the market reacts and how things really look in real time around the area. A lot of these things that, about which I, there is no opportunity to say no to, we're going to get proof. They're going to come on the market. We're going to see that. We're going to be able to visualize it. I can't do it with, uh, courtyard apartments. Maybe I can do it if it happens in one of our neighboring communities. So I, I guess for now, I'm, I'm a no. I'm not, uh, you know, I, excuse me, small apartments.
Yes, yes.
I, I'm not, uh, I'm not philosophically opposed. I just don't have the, uh, certainty right now to endorse it with a party yes.
That's fine. Yeah. Tom, where are you?
Um, so as far as small apartments are concerned, I, one of the things that you, you started cleaning yourself with, with the law and you started, you know, trying to wrap your mind around that. And then I started, you know, having to figure out about these design standards and the Jell-O molds. And one of the things that, and, and I'm concerned about infill kinds of things. And what I think is the genius that Marcy has given us is that with all of that combined, here, I, I would, I don't want to see a small apartment building go up in the M1 or M2 districts. But I would be open to it in M3.
Which we can't do.
Why?
Well, excuse me, I answered that too quickly.
It's different than when, it would differ from what's recommended, but since it's not required, we could be flexible enough to say, if you want to put up a small apartment in an area that's largely unimproved at this point, then I'm, I'm open to that.
Okay, that's another wrinkle in how we look at this. Um.
But that would be a no on the final column here because the final column is in all our zones.
Yeah.
And so I would be a no on that. But I could be open to it in the MH3.
Maybe let's just keep going then.
Okay.
And then, uh, we didn't spend too much time talking about, uh, mixed-use residential plus commercial in all of the R zones.
I'd like a definition of mixed use and does residential and commercial mean zones? Or does it mean a unit that has residential and commercial purposes in one building?
It's, so it's vertically integrated. So you usually have commercial on the ground floor and then residential.
Like the new building next to the one.
Yes. A lot of the buildings on Manzanita are mixed use. So what we're familiar with already is what we have in our commercial district, right? Which is the only place we have that now.
Love.
Correct.
And this could propose to allow in any zones, a mixed commercial and residential.
Yes. Also just caveat and note that what is now currently the SRR would allow that by right now.
So MH.
It would be.
It allows that now.
Yes.
So this would be the addition effectively to the SR1 and SR2 zones as they are laid out on the new map. So this would allow really an additional two zones in, in town as the, in, in terms of the new map to mix residential and commercial. So we haven't, let's just see, let's just do a test and see where we are with that, Tom. And again, yes, no, or I don't know. And what can we do about, I don't know?
Uh, MH3 only.
So where it is allowed now, commercial and MH3. So you're saying no to all, all zones. That's what, that's.
Saying no to all zones.
Jerry?
No.
It was a what?
It was a no?
There was a no, okay.
No?
I don't, I don't have enough information.
Okay, let's come back to that. Brad?
I would say no except in MH3 and commercial zone.
Right. So that's a no. The no here effectively says it's allowed in the commercial zone and the S, our current SRR zone now MH3 zone where they're allowed by right. So we can't take that back. So, okay. So Linda, let's come back to you then. Is there anything we can do like right now to, uh, help you move further along or get you more information? Or what do you think?
Well, I, so my experience has been, uh, in larger cities like Portland that the combination of mixed-use residential and commercial really works. And so I'm trying to figure out in zone one and two, if it would make a difference. I, I I can go with the consensus of us. I, it's not as strong. It's just.
Okay.
Yeah, I can go with that.
So a statement that Tom and it, Tom or I don't recall it, a suggestion that it be allowed in all zones.
Okay. We know where we are with it now. So that's, yeah, excellent. Okay. 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 Well, actually, actually not so much oh-oh in terms of our, our decision-making because when we were in our last, I think it was our last meeting or meeting before that, we, I think narrowed down just to two places where we actually have a decision to make because everything else is required by law.
Okay.
And so again, I'm looking for all eyes on this to make sure, correct in that. But what I had noted was our choices are basically where we have single family at the top. It's currently re, currently two per unit are required. And the proposal is one per unit in the draft. Wait a minute, I got that wrong. Two per unit, not regulated.
It's not one.
One per unit proposed.
So difference, there is a difference and it says not.
But isn't it required? I mean, isn't that part of the?
So the state doesn't regulate that. Our current regulations require two.
Okay.
And so the planning commission recommended one.
Okay.
So we have a choice here to stay with two per unit. Again, this is only for single-family homes or reduce that to one per unit. And I'm going to do this little. And I'm gonna do this, does anybody need any clarification? Before we start to vote, does anybody need any clarification on that or have a question about that? Okay, then Brad, would you mind starting?
I would say that is a no, meaning we should currently still require two per unit.
Okay, Linda? And the same. Jerry?
Two per unit.
Hey, and Tom?
Two per unit.
Then the only other place for discussion is come down to single family dwelling under five hundred square feet. Uh, the current requirement there is two per unit, the proposal in draft is zero per unit. And that's for any lot size meeting, the minimum requirement for a dwelling of, of five hundred square feet or under. Does anybody need clarification or have any questions they wanna ask about that?
So the maximum number this we can require. Is one, is that right?
Yes, sorry, I, I just talked about what's currently required. Thank you, Linda, see, that's what I was asking for, good job.
So we can only require one, but the proposed.
Zero is zero, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I guess I need just clarification of what we're really talking about. Here, I mean, I know what a single family house is, I know what five hundred square feet is, I don't see a lot of them. In town, I don't know what, uh, the minimum lot size would be for that small house. Uh, if we're trying to promote the, the uh, building of small single family houses. Um, that's okay, um, and I would expect to have some accommodation, uh, in terms of parking for that, but I just. You know, we, we've talked a lot about townhouses and triplexes and fourplexes, if this. Small house, the small single family house, we didn't, haven't really had a lot of discussion, I don't think, and so I guess I'm trying to understand what. What the planning commission is talking about in that regard, you, are there? Houses like that around town that I'm not seeing, and if not, is that the plan to? Promote the building of them, and if so, on what size lot?
Depending on what the final decision about lot size is. The planning commission's. Recommendation, I guess, was since there was a, a potential for four units on a five thousand square foot lot, that the twelve fifty. Was a reasonable. Yes, right, so twelve fifty and times point six five.
The floor area ratio?
Yes.
You're doing.
So, okay, okay, maybe I get, so a single family dwelling.
Eight hundred square feet, ultimately on a twelve hundred fifty square foot lot is as big as you. Would be allowed if you move forward with the point six five, so five, five hundred square feet is a pretty tiny house. And that would be a pretty affordable house.
You're talking about a freestanding house, if somebody owns a. Small lot in fee simple?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, for a lot of our discussions, it feels like we've been talking about the only real exception lot size wise. To what we're used to in town is townhouses. And then the discussion has been, is it twelve fifty or is it fifteen hundred? But, uh, it's actually.
Sorry, should I say something?
Leila, do you wanna lead or Marcy or Marcy? Marcy and I'll chime in, thank you.
The, uh, the idea here was that units like what were just approved in the cottage cluster. That came through as a PUD, those are very small units, there's clustered parking for those, but. Um, in the event that you pass this, it might mean that. There could be clustered parking, but not a parking spot for every single dwelling would be required. Um, I think you could also see courtyard apartments or cottage clusters. That are the size where you wouldn't have to provide a parking space and. I would point to classic cottages as an example of a size, of that size of a unit. There are units that small in that development.
I think the difference in visualizing it is, that's a planned unit. I know technically by state law, it's not a planned unit development, but it's. It is a planned unit development, it's not technically a cottage cluster, but the idea there. And the, and the group parking lots that are available is different than picturing individual. Small houses on streets with no, nothing but street parking available for them. That to me is a different concept and a different thing than a shared parking area, even if maybe you don't have as many. Parking spots as you do units, that's a different animal than. Than what I'm picturing with this, which is where they're individually, just they. They're on, well, we haven't gotten to lot size yet, but when we get to that, they're on. Smaller lots are available, will be available than are available now, and small houses like these could come up, so. Not thinking about groups of things so much, but just individual lots where this could happen, we'd be. Proposing to say that, that we'd be preferring to say that that land be used for. Whatever housing could be built there and not require a parking place, which would make it less likely to be able to build it on a small. In a bag even remotely close there.
I think probably, you know, the market's gonna tell you it's gonna happen, and we'll depend on lot size. But, you know, parking is, that's affordable house. Uh, very complicated, I'm starting to roll that concept. If they think here was, say was, small lot, someone to build a house in. Either category here would be one space. Square feet, space.
Just to throw another couple, like city here is that, wish, if we approve, I think the right word was pocket parking.
Yes.
I would approve that versus this, because with pocket parking, any of these should be able to have a parking space at least one.
Okay. Leila, did you wanna add anything to the discussion note? Okay. Sorry, Marcy, go ahead, did you say?
Uh, that we did a three D model, it was included in an earlier discussion material. That we had with you, a work session with you and planning commission too, um. Say, just picture the end lot of a block where we might have. Um, a long face, it's at the end of a block and it's a five thousand square foot lot with three sides basically. That we could fit four townhouses on that, but you could only fit two. Um, pocket, par- parking pockets on it, so if you made two of the townhouses. Twelve hundred, fifteen hundred square feet inside, and you made two of the townhouses, five hundred square feet. You know, a small house for somebody to own, you would not have to provide parking for all four of those, which would actually be impossible to do. On the site, it's ju, it, it was intended to provide another creative option. For small ownership housing.
It's just not logical to me if you have a five hundred square foot townhouse or house. Then I build a house with a five hundred square foot footprint and put a second story. Now that's a thousand foot, why would the thousand foot one need a parking space in the five hundred, not? Yes, technically the thousand foot would house more people, meaning there's probably more cars, but. It's just not sinking in for me.
Can I take a read on this one? Start down here, just um, Tom?
Okay, um, so, uh, the required amount is one per unit, um, that's my thinking. We, we, we're dealing with, you know, all these different lawful goals, you know, uh, cry, trying to. Create a, a dwelling unit that's proper sized, somebody can afford to live in it. If you're living, you, you can't live in this rural community without. Uh, you know. Uh, it, it's great to, to have the objective of, of making housing more available and getting people out of their cars. But I still have to deal with the reality that you need. Um, you gotta go get your groceries, you gotta, you know, go to your medical, what is hurt here in town. Um, and people need cars to do that, we don't have like transportation, so why?
Okay, so it's a no. Jerry?
Uh, I'm gonna say one with a caveat, and that is that like a lot of this stuff, obviously, it's a puzzle. And we're taking it a piece at a time, which makes sense, otherwise we'd never get to the end. Um, but when the puzzle comes together at the end, uh, it may be easier for me to understand better. This particular line item, in which case, uh, I could see myself being comfortable with. Is zero per unit, but for now, I, I'm gonna say one and watch the puzzle come together.
Okay. You have the right to revise. As we all do, I'm a, I'm a no on that as well, so one, Linda? Brad?
No.
And I would like to keep in mind. Case what you're hearing is no, is that there are an awful lot of yeses on this page as well, which I think is part of it. Most counselors have in their mind as they're thinking about the votes right now, so I'm gonna go next to. Well, hang on, let's look at this and say, do we have enough consensus? Today to give staff their direction on changes. That would be made, cuz that's the next stage of work before it comes back to. Us, and then goes to legal again, or it goes to legal for review, so on the. Small apartments. We're more, we're more no than yes. It's three, two, so Brad and Linda were in favor of that. We had the zone discussion, I'm not gonna repeat that, so do you feel like we, we, and we're not gonna do it right this minute, but do you feel like we need to have more work? On that, cuz it's not like a three, two vote kinda thing, it's just, could you get there? Do you, or do you, and, and truly, if you feel strongly about it, now's the time to just. Okay?
Agreed.
Okay, so we're gonna say on that, that's direction to, uh, that's direction to staff to remove this small apartment. And then. Mixed use residential and commercial is out of the picture. And then, uh, the two options on parking, the single family. Will remain at two per unit.
Correct.
Or the single family dwelling under five hundred square feet, although some things might shift as we get into the rest of the items, we're. We're pri, we're universally no, almost universally no on that one, so we're at one per unit. Rather than a recommend, a recommended zero, okay.
That's a good one for the comprehensive plan.
Pardon me?
That's a good one for the comprehensive plan team, in my opinion.
Okay, so I'm gonna go to the topics review document. To separate. And. All right. So same caveat, if anything doesn't pass muster, or I've misinterpreted something doing this, let me know, so, um. Okay, so this, these show up in different presentations, but this is basically distilling a lot of things that came. From a May presentation that the cat planning commission used, so here we go, um. The first thing we have is a develop, excuse me, is permitting a smaller minimum lot size of twelve hundred and fifty square feet for. Townhouses and, um, it's not noted on here, but fifteen hundred square feet is the requirement. Let's just go through these and make sure they make sense to everybody. Um, so that's the first thing, permitting a smaller minimum lot size of twelve hundred and fifteen square foot for townhouses. That goes above and beyond the fifteen hundred square feet that were required. There's a second item, which is permit a smaller minimum lot size for all other housing types, and again, the same amount was recommended. The third item is to reduce the front setback to ten feet from its current twenty. Fourth item has to do with Jell-O molds, for those of you who've been following, uh, the side yard height plane. There's no change on the front half of the lot proposed, but on the back half of the lot, there's some restriction. We can talk about that when we come back, the fifth is to establish a floor area, not ration, pardon me, ratio. Uh, for all residential uses. The sixth is to establish a maximum cap square footage of three thousand square feet for the first building. With a give back for additional dwelling units, up to the maximum FAR allowed for the lot. Seventh is, seven and eight are maintained, so I'm not gonna require a good on those. Uh, commission basically said we wanna, and there was discussion about these things. Uh, but they were decided in the end to maintain the current height limit of twenty eight point five feet. And maintain the current rear yard setback of five. Okay, so I'd like to open with lot sizes and here. First of all, do. Yes, yeah.
I'm still trying to get a hand on this cuz I've been studying the new law, which is passed up and commission give this.
Okay.
The law requires that you allow fourplexes on a lot, we have five thousand square foot lots now, so a fourplex you have. It can all be co-fitted. The law also requires partitions, so that after you create a fourplex, you can. Partitioned as in four lots, choosing we did. If I'm reading that correctly, we would have to allow.
So I wanna clarify, is that a result of the governor's most recent orders, because most of the towns up and down from us have gone with the model code, which was fifteen hundred?
Okay.
So, if I'm missing something, I would like to know.
That's what I'm looking. And it's the one that requires that you allow. Fourplex in any block. And then it goes on to have the middle house partition requirements that. You have to allow partition. For middle house as you've created, so.
So what you're saying is that the minimum lot size fifteen hundred has become surplusage because of this. Language about quiet being.
Yeah, and that is, it's, it's. Marcy told us through her presentations, there's a lot.
Yes, so.
But I don't think the requirements to allow four dwellings on any lots. And so if someone owns a thousand square foot lot today, which I don't know if they do. You wouldn't be allowed to put four dwellings in that.
I think it's based on the minimum required lot size, we require five thousands, maybe Mercy can chime in here, Mercy. So your, your, your point's been raised, and I think we understand it as. Believe me, we know what it look, feels to feel that way.
Required a fourplex be allowed around every block or parcel in the residential site, so in every lot, you have to. Your residences have to allow a fourplex, and then there's a further provision, a lot that requires. Our fishing. To those. So. The way I'm understanding that is that once you allow the fourplex, then you have to allow it by its four lots.
So let me, let me pause here, just pause a second, so Leila, let's take your point, if we're into an area where. If we are into an area where we've got additional changes that are gonna go into effect in about a year and a half. And we weren't aware of that, at least as this was developed, then we also have an option to say, put that to the side. And let's, I don't wanna rush through what current state law is now. What current state law is now, based on the fact that we haven't spent time on it, so if we can get a. I'd like to get your assessment, and I'd like to get Marcy's assessment, but we also have the option to say. Let's spend some more time on that particular one, and we're just gonna have to pause on that while we work on the others, so what do you think?
Um, I'd like Marcy to clarify and confirm. Tom's assessment, which I believe is correct. And then if the answer is that is correct, my recommendation to he would be, do it now, because it's clear. And having to go through this process again, I don't think would be efficient or in the best interest.
No, it would not be efficient. It's frustrating to sit here and understand. The thinking that, I'll speak for myself, that I put into is now not relevant, and I'm just learning about it now.
Oh, I feel you.
I know, I know, but that's where I'm coming from.
Yes, then maybe Marcy can clarify.
I feel frustrated too. Hello. I feel frustrated too, because we're, we're getting current interpretation as we speak from DLCD and Hapo. Uh, they, they are very responsive in providing information, but it is still changing, and I have to say that. While the, what Tom is saying is correct, all the housing types are going to be required on all the lot sizes. So this lot size rule that came through in twenty nineteen is obsolete, will become obsolete. Um, regarding the townhouse lot size, though. They're still trying to figure that out, they still have to write the rules, they're working on a new model code for middle housing right now, based on twenty one thirty eight. So in terms of the, what the townhouse lot size will have to be. It, it's possible it won't remain at fifteen hundred, it will go smaller. On that one point, uh, we don't yet know.
We could just see here.
So. Face it in what you know today, and then we will be doing this again next year, which will affect our ability to do other things.
Yes, we're dependent on what the state has done for that, so it's nothing we can control, not our choice at all, so.
No, I just think it's a management of expectations in terms of what the city's capable of, able to do. And I think it probably is prudent if the rules are not written, that you utilize the rules that you have before you today.
Okay, let's, that brings to mind another option we have, but I don't raise it right now, wait till we get through, and Brad, you go ahead.
Yeah, my, my assessment of this twelve fifty recommendation was the majority of lots are complying lots, sort of five thousand square feet. So the reason twelve fifty was recommended, so you can cut that lot into four and allow four townhouses. Because if you talk about fifteen hundred feet, which is a requirement, you'd have to have a six thousand square foot lot.
That's.
So basically, if we went fifteen hundred, you'd be able to get three townhouses on a lot, and if we approved twelve, twelve. Fifty, we're able to get four on a lot, is that a correct assessment of the recommendation? So that, that cleared it up in my mind, and now I, it's clear for me now that you've validated what I thought.
You wanna start then?
I would say yes.
Yes to twelve fifty?
For townhouses. Something else, when we get to zoning, this means four would be allowed in MH one or MH two. Plus, for, we were told the difference between MH one and MH two is MH one would only allow two connected townhouses, but MH two would allow four. This changes that.
I don't think it does, is that correct, Marcy? That restriction would still remain.
No, that restricts. But only two in MH one, which is generally a four thousand or five thousand square foot lot predominant zone. The uh, townhouses, only two are allowed to be attached to each other. That's the minimum for townhouses, but in the larger lot. So, sorry, Brad.
If we had a five thousand square foot lot in MH one. Four townhouses would be allowed. Detached.
No, they would have to be detached from each other, you could have two and two. They have to be detached from each other and separated by the minimum uh, spacing distance which we've set at ten feet.
MH two would allow the four of them to be attached.
Correct.
Yeah, clear.
Linda?
I'm so confused. My vote, as I did my analysis, is this was yes, so I'm gonna stick with this.
Okay.
Just wanna make a note, Josh is gonna come monkey with the likes, but you keep, you keep going.
Oh, are we off again?
Just from here. Yeah. Not later, but.
So um. I'm uncomfortable about this one, it wasn't clear already, I will state that. I, I don't, it's just. It's gonna be state law, it's not gonna be state law, they're working on the new model code, I mean, I'm just like, what do we do now versus? Later, um. So I guess when in, when in doubt, I'm gonna say no, I just, and it's, it's just kind of a function of where we're. Where we're at in this process and what we've gotta do right now, so I'm a no. Jerry?
Uh, no, for the same reasons.
And Tom?
Well, no, for the same reasons, although I was prepared to say yes to MH three.
Okay. Not into of the uh. All right. So that's, this is a, when I restate it, this, because this is a.
Complexity that you stated. I will change my vote to no, because that is confusing. I was yes when I thought I understood. You, you decision I was making, with the complexity and the changes, uh, I would, I will change my vote to no.
So the, the no vote on this isn't, you know, it's not as clearly stated here as I could have done, but it implies the fifteen hundred, is a yes to fifteen hundred. Which is, which is in the model code, as we know it right now. Oh no, we just lost Mercy. See, don't give up on us, oh, you, you disappeared for a second, I thought you'd. Gone out to get the latest edition of the new model code, and we were gonna have to use that too.
Believe me, I'm looking it up.
Humor is a great help when you're, you're working on things, so to, I, I mean it in a very kind way, okay. So that's a no, um. It's a yes to fifteen hundred square feet and a no to twelve fifty. Okay, and then the same question, smaller minimum lot sizes for other housing types. So this was also recommended at twelve fifty versus the model code of fifteen hundred. And it's the same situation. Me if I'm wrong, it's the same situation we were in in the prior. Where this in fact may be, the twelve fifty may in effect be required of us, but it's. The new legislation and it's not in place yet, and people are still trying to figure it out. I know I probably grossly overstated that last thing, but. Is it, is it basically the same situation as the prior item, or is there something, is there a different wrinkle to this?
This is not.
Clarify what the item we're discussing is.
Well, this is permit a smaller minimum lot size for other housing types, so basically all housing types. In addition to middle housing.
So this would be similarly. Um, kind of up in the air, but. This wasn't, this was an option to extend the minimum lot size that you're required to adopt for townhouses. To other housing types like cottages, which you are not required to do, but it was desired by the planning commission.
So this would mean we could have a minimum lot size of, if we approve this, of twelve fifty for a single family. Or. Duplex or extensive.
Yes.
Karen's Rest, that was just approved, had smaller ones.
How?
And he basically asked for approval or appearance on that, it wasn't.
It went through the PUD, says, which again isn't clear enough. This would allow it to be done in clearance of the statements.
I'll let me start with you.
Um. Yeah, no.
Okay. It was implied, Jerry, sorry, I didn't say it, I can't, I can't say it out loud, though, so that didn't really help you. Okay.
No.
Okay. No.
No.
You know. Okay, reducing the front setback to ten feet from its current twenty. Both the, at least one planning commission member spoke about this and the intent. Intent of it, do counselors have any questions or anything they'd like to clarify on this? Shall we get a read on this? Okay, Brad? Linda? You can be the odd person out sometimes, you know, you shouldn't even call it that, I mean. You know what I mean, though, I mean, it's like. Yes, okay. I'm a no.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Tom?
And then. Um, this is another area where, um, as a blanket, I'm a no to it. Though I'd be open to it in the MH three areas. Uh, because of some of the, the comments I heard from Brad about, you know, the. My neighbor could decide to go ten feet forward with their lot and then. Create a, a completely different environment in my established neighborhood, so. I know, unless it's just restricted to new developments and places where there's a lot of. Open space to create a new neighborhood altogether.
Okay, so we've got um. Slightly more no and a couple of yeses, my thinking on this one, it comes from two things, one of. Two things. One is um. One is the, actually goes back to, and I guess this is where we can have different opinions about things. But one is the idea of pedestrian friendly neighborhoods and having clean line of sight and being, have things being visible. If I'm driving or walking or on a bike or. My eventual tricycle, which is my goal next year sometime, so I think the, the setback being that much closer to the street, um. It doesn't, it did, I understand the logic of it, and I understand. I understand why you wanna push it to the street, but I, I say no for that reason, because I just don't, I don't think that's a good. Setup, but the other thing is sort of a practical one, um. And looking what the market, you know, will do, et cetera, and so, you know, I took a little drive around, which I do sometimes, and. You know, virtually all of the new development, particularly the stuff that's gone in up on, I always say on the hill. But almost everything up there has got a garage that's either flush or just slightly, um, excuse me. Sorry, uh, my brain just kind of took a little curve there, I'm gonna come back to myself, there, it just. It, the tw- the tw- I'll just say, the twenty foot setback just feels. To me, more like the. Atmosphere. We have today, which is open to and friendly to. People moving between things as opposed to the house itself, so. I just like to try and explain my vote a little bit there. And I don't know if uh, Linda or. Uh, Jerry, you wanna say anything more about why you voted the way you did? And whether you're, what's, what's behind it, because we're not, we don't have consensus on this one.
Yeah, I, I honestly, uh. Am deferring largely to the expertise, uh, in the diligence of the planning commission on, um, this, and. You may not believe me, because it's one of my previous votes, although. And most of what you guys have proposed, we are. Both bodies are agreed that, uh. You got it right, and we're gonna go ahead with what's required under the law. This one is obviously uh, optional, I think you guys spent a lot of time with it, you know better than I, uh. I'm sympathetic to the argument about, you know. Suddenly. Having your neighbors change the nature of your neighborhood, but I think as a general premise, I'm, I'm hoping that's not. Gonna happen, and I presume that this is gonna primarily, as Tom has pointed out, and. Often, this is primarily gonna be something that we're gonna see in undeveloped parts of town, uh, take hold. The only thing I, the one thing, though, I would say on. You know, fiddling with setbacks is, you know, we're all on both sides of every issue. Everybody agrees we wanna maintain what we have here, but what we have here happened without. A ten foot setback, um. So I just, you know, I'm a little nervous about fiddling with. Fixing something that's not broken, but that said, uh, at least relatively speaking, I'm comfortable with this one.
Thanks. So uh, Leila, I'm gonna think through something out loud on this with you and get your feedback. So on this one, it's, it's not clear, eventually, we're not doing it today, eventually we will be voting. In which case, three of us or two of us, and that will decide it, um, is it possible to? What's your recommendation on how we take an item where we don't have consensus today? And we may need the, and may need to want to use the time for the public comment, et cetera, et cetera. So that we're using staff time wisely, um. Between now and when we get to a decision when we are actually voting, because this one's not as clear.
So you're saying you would wanna take, you would want to take public comment before deliberating further. To see if you can reach consensus on this particular item?
Well, I'm try, trying to say. Through the process we're doing today, we're giving you, you and Marcy, direction on what to keep the same or change. In the, in the right above the code, so on this one. We are, we just went kind of strictly by the numbers, we would say. We would say, take this out, keep it at twenty. But there's also a strong possibility, this is very close, so somebody could change their mind, and we could be in actually the voting process on this. And. Say no, rather than yes, or yes, rather than no, it's, you, do you wanna just, you, is it better to then just? Leave it as it is right now, don't make a change, keep it in there as is, knowing that when we're in. When we're actually voting, this could be something that is voted differently than we're giving you direction on today.
Yeah, so my suggestion would be that, um. So what we would do is take the guidance that we get today, that there is consensus on, and we would amend the ordinance recommendation. The items that you don't have consensus on, I would say, like, see how many of those there are. Um, and depending on that, if there's just a couple. Then staff can proceed with updating the ordinance with the majority of the items. And then when you hold your public hearing, you're not going to be deciding, you know. Article by article, you're gonna be adopting the ordinance or no.
Okay.
And in that time, you could suggest. Amendments to the ordinance as you adopt, so that's what I'm saying, if there's just a couple. And you're comfortable with that, then we would just make the changes that we have, and then. You may need to deliberate on those additional items.
Yeah.
So if there's more than a couple, I would suggest you work it out in a work session and give staff direction on. All of it.
So in this particular situation, since it's three to two. You would go ahead and put it in as a, not changing the setback. And we would, if, if we felt strongly enough, we would ask for an amendment.
Yeah, then you would do that at the table, and then you would determine if you'd vote no entirely on the ordinance itself because of that one piece.
So I guess what I'm asking is, before we vote, uh, because I, that. This seems really uncomfortable for me to have one thing. I have bashed the whole. Situation that we've spent hours on. But it it and this, I don't think it's going to happen in this particular one, it may happen on. But but in this particular situation, right now, the vote of the council is that we keep the twenty foot setback. If there is enough concern. Either by Jerry or I or the community, and we really. To separate that out and have a vote on it. And amend the law. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, so you can do that. We can absolutely amend it as you're deliberating the adoption of the ordinance and hold, that happens. That happens.
Okay.
Um, my suggestion would be, though, if that list is long. I think you yourself's a disservice by having. That if your goal is to reach consensus, which I think it is.
Yeah.
Um. So I think. For staff, it would be helpful to get. As clear directions possible. And then for you all to be aware, if there's stuff sticking out there, I think it's your, it is your decision to determine whether or not you want to. Hold additional work sessions to hash it out.
Okay.
Or wait until you hear from the club and do it in a public setting, which. It's.
If there's agreement on an item, and we try to amend or deliberate that during the vote ordinance. Do we say majority rules, if that's in or out, or we've also got the option to say, I'm going to say no to the whole thing because I don't like. Thing.
You could.
I think we have both of those, so in my opinion. To prevent that, I think we need to do more work to come to a consensus.
Well, I think Leila's um advice about seeing how much of that we have is is good, and we're, we've still got a bit to go. So I want to do a time check and just see how people are now, it's a little before five. I think we've got. Another thirty minutes, at least, maybe a little bit longer than that, can people go a little bit longer?
Yeah.
Rather than have another session?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I take a moment to stand up?
Pardon me?
Can we take a moment?
Give us some breathing exercises?
No. I think Nancy could do that, though, you know?
Yeah, and so. All right, we'll keep going. All right, so yeah, please do, thank you, Tom. So, thank you, Tom, it's just automatic, thank you, Tom. Okay, so next is the side yard height planes. This is the uh. Where there's no change on the front half of the lot, and it is a bit more restrictive on the.
Jello mold.
Rear half part of the jello mold discussion, meaning that it's favoring. The house be. More to the front half of the lot and less in the back half of the lot, without getting technically about it, fair enough? Okay.
I add just a little commentary right in, so if. You end up keeping the twenty foot setback, I think Marcy mentioned this at a previous. Work session. You may want to make, we would probably recommend and then. Change to that jello mold so that you still maintain um. With a larger box in the front, so would reduce the back, do you remember it was like?
Oh, so it would reduce the backyard?
Yes, if Marcy could probably do a better job explaining this than I can. We talked about, so that was like that sort of, right now you just have a big kind of butt and goes up. And so in terms of just sort of. Retaining some amount of. Bulk, you reduced the setback. Ten feet, that bulk is 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 less, it's like fifty percent. Is the box, and then the side yard plane is in the back. If you maintain the twenty yard, twenty foot setback, you might want to just increase that box. Because the um. Side yard plane is predicated on the ten foot setback, the twenty foot setback, so you lose ten feet. Did I say that right?
Yeah, that's right, you take the boxier front part and push the entire thing back ten feet. So you would be reducing the more sloped backyard area by ten feet.
So you're kind of training on the setback or the backyards? Right?
There.
Okay, Brad, we'll start with you.
Uh, A and B both, yes.
Linda?
Strong yes.
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 Okay. That makes no taking easier. Okay, uh, establish a floor area ratio for all residential uses. Anything need clarifying here? I I think in terms of um. Terms of community feedback and what's been offered, I think five and six are closely related in terms of. Um.
Yes.
So they're closely related, so we'll just leave it at that for now, so uh. Brad, do you want to start on five?
Yes.
Floor area ratio for our residential uses?
Yes.
Again, a strong yes.
Okay. I'm a no. Cherry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got consensus on that. So we'll accept that. For staff. Next thing, item six, establish a max cap on square footage of three thousand feet for the first building. With a give back for additional dwelling units up to the maximum FAR. Which is still in existence now. Allowed for the lot. So does anybody need? Uh. Clarity on this, any comments to be made? Okay, Tom, do you want to start this one?
Yes.
No.
I'm a no.
And a strong yes.
Yes.
Okay. We have a consensus. I have a pretty strong feeling about this one. So. We may have to come back to this.
Because I I also have a very strong feeling about, so.
That's great. This is why we're up here, that's why we are the people in these chairs, okay, so that needs work. Needs to be hashed out, okay, uh. Okay, anybody going to object to maintaining the current height limit or the current rear yard setback of five feet? I mean, what's like, there, okay. Parking. There's four items here. Allowing multiple lots to share drive, and again, if there's been any change with the recent um legislation on any of these, Marcy, no. Okay. Okay, wasn't being facetious, there's been a lot to keep up with. So allow multiple lots to share drives.
That's required, we don't have a yes or no.
So thank you, that's, I had that in the note and I missed it, so we were required to allow multiple lots to share drives, so we're not voting on that, thank you, Brad. Uh. Two, three, and four are not required, so let me call those out, limit driveway widths to no more than ten feet from the current twelve. Permit driveways to be located three feet from a property, from side property line, that's for the current five. And in addition to a driveway, permit a single parking space adjacent to the front property line in a parallel parking configuration, the parking pocket. It includes a minimum landscape requirement to buffer parking pockets from driveways, so there's some additional detail there. So coming back then to the um. Driveway widths first, so limiting driveway widths to no, sorry?
Clarification.
Sure, sure, right ahead.
When we speak about driveway, you're talking about a poured cement driveway. So if I had a rawish. And I've got thirty feet of space, I could put gravel there and allow cars to park, what we're talking about is a. Poured cement driveway, today it's allowed twelve feet. And we're trying to decide if we're reducing that to ten feet, is that correct?
I'm really glad you asked that, because it's gravel driveways where I live and I assume that was. Was it dependent or?
A gravel space, I would not consider that a driveway, I've just decided to landscape.
These are specific to the places.
The places?
These are forgotten throughout. Are specific to places on site or?
No, there, I think there, I'll let Marcy chime in, but I think they're applicable to all, same.
We haven't specified that. The driveway has to be paved. We're just letting the driveway be what. They, people currently use for their driveways, gravel or paved. We didn't specify a change in that aspect. Just in the width.
So my, my summary was correct, we're talking about a paved area of either twelve or ten feet.
No, it can be either, but hang on.
Just saying. Minimum. Is. Ten feet, but there's not. So this is no more than.
It's currently twelve.
And maximum, yeah.
It's currently twelve, and the suggestion is to reduce it to ten.
So this is the width.
Yes.
Limit the driveway widths. To no more than ten feet, so it is putting a maximum on it.
Now, there's a lot.
It's well, twelve. Okay, and I'm gonna, I know it's tempting, but we're, so do we need clarification on that? Is it?
No, it's twelve.
Okay.
I need to ask the planning, I I don't understand. This, why you would do this, what is the logic of that?
It it's really to have more landscaping and less paving. Ten feet. Staking. New transportation. And. I have. That'd be, that's tiny.
But it's still not clear to me, you said paved, but then they said, no, it could be gravel.
It can be either.
What delineates? In my house. There's a front section that's larger than twelve feet. That I've decided to put gravel on. What delineates that from a driveway, or like if we look at this building across the street? That whole paved area or that whole gravel area in front, is that a driveway? This is.
But.
But that's a house, we've got a giant gravel area, is that a driveway? Or do I have to delineate with? Little rocks or something to draw a driveway in the gravel area?
I think the point is that when you come in for an application. You have to show where your parking is on site is going to be accommodated. And you would want to show. That you've dedicated a um. A portion of your gravel front for that uh head and parking space, or you've created room for a parking pocket.
So I couldn't decide, I had a larger gravel area, not designated for parking, but I might park a car there if guests come.
Yeah, that would be an enforcement issue, really, but not a um. You know, an issue of your application for a middle housing.
Well, it's.
I'm sorry, I know it's it's hard, I'd like to hear from everybody, but that's not the format today, so please.
Just one more question, and because we're going to get to that, the three foot. Side yard uh setback. To per- permit driveways to be located three feet from the side property line instead of five. Is that again an issue of?
The. One more space.
Okay.
Space.
Okay.
Hmm. I think, you know, on the second one, the example, I I think. With any of these, you can come up with a specific unusual examples of where. It's not going to work like a large gravel space, so I. Because as I'm thinking about this and thinking about it in terms of. Committing something new, because the example you. Just gave is problematic for the twelve foot too, right? It's not just ten or twelve, it's it's problematic, because if somebody does that in the front of a. Home, and a lot of homes do that, because gravel's a way to. Take care of water and, you know, and all that kind of stuff, so.
Do you know right part, even in your property?
I don't know.
I mean.
I mean, this grass area, plenty of people fall into the grass and park there.
So I, so I. Preventing that from happening per se, it's just saying that.
But if I gravel that grass area, it's then a driveway. Doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. Okay, so. Let's just try and see on this one. Yes?
It's limited width, it's not requiring, so.
Yeah.
It's it's not something.
Well, now, the way this is written, it says it's currently twelve, and we're making it ten, so it is limiting the width.
It's reducing, you know, it's reducing the maximum that you can do for a driveway. Yeah.
If if it might help to think of that.
But you're telling me I can't have a gravel area bigger than ten or twelve feet?
So think of a portlet.
A driveway.
All right, sorry, Marcy, go ahead.
If you could picture this uh rule in any other city, say, and and say that you have grass instead of, you have a a gravel drive that. You came in and showed the planning department, that was your driveway, that was how you were going to accommodate on-street parking, you got your approval for your middle housing. And the rest of your front yard is grass. There's really nothing. In the planning, in the zoning, that prevents you from parking on your grass, and people do, in fact, all over the place. Um, and that, that's an enforcement issue. But you could put gravel there, you could put grass there, you can still park on it, it's not. What is intended by the zoning. Code, but it's not a zoning code issue, I mean, it's it's not something that we can handle in the zoning code.
Because there are some people like myself, I don't want grass, because I don't want to know it. That's why I put gravel across the.
Yeah, and it's in your, if it's in your front yard setback, the front yard setback. Is not intended to be used for parking. So you can landscape it, I've gravelled around my house. So dogs, so. That's where it does become an enforcement issue, is if people are parking on their grass or in their front yards, they're actually parking in the setback. And that's. Generally not allowed. So.
Everybody on my street parks on setback, and the whole city does. Otherwise, they'd be in the middle of the road, this is, this is really not clear to me.
Sorry, sorry, Michael, just. Really, I mean.
Can I read them? It's one sentence. Each lawn with a front line of fifty feet minimum. Shall be allowed two. Twelve and a half foot wide driveways. Or one twenty-five. And then. You know, because I've done it recently, in. Right away details of how you're attached to the stream. The maximum you're allowed to tie into the stream is twenty-five feet. So.
Oh, you're right, for lots larger than.
My question is, are we talking about reducing from twenty-five to ten? That's my first. Hey. Because no one is giving you. Choose a ten.
Because I could see having. A fifty foot wide gravel area. With a twelve foot space that you drive in and do this part versus having.
The. Was that the. Come on, space, flat lots and things. Uh, which is a twenty foot. This to. Twenty feet. Like. If the intent of this was to allow for. Two or three lots that were lotsized. The access. Just ten feet. And I think Mercy's community, right? The. One of the most certainly others. Illustrate the intent. Of discretion. Want to include. To. It's about to net. Or. This. Be written.
If your requirement is twelve feet, can I build an eight foot wide driveway today?
Yes.
Yeah, so this point I'm trying to get at, I didn't remember, in the very detail of our conversation, as many of us, but the thing, Jerry, for me. Is this is a limitation. On how, if you want to make it no limit. Do this, why is your lot, because you want to have cars to plant, have a. The only thing I'm concerned is that we don't require. A big ton, because that will prohibit it. Houses on this, so, I mean, as far as this. I remember, you know, this this person can see this. It shouldn't be limited on how big. It should not be required.
Well. I would just add to that, so so Mike is right, lots are bigger than fifty feet wide, allow for two twelve and a half foot, and it's twelve and a half feet. Driveways, the issue for us is. The um.
Is the access from the right of way into. Property, so we just dealt with this on parents' rest, right? The number of different cuts that have to be made in that road to allow cars. To get into that area, and so that's why you have typically a. A driveway with. Requirement, where we have a limitation is because you, you kind of wanna avoid. Was just saying, so you have that maximum so as to prevent. Essentially a sea of driveways or parking.
Spaces.
No.
Connected to street. Right with where she connects to street.
And because we don't have sidewalks, things get muddled here.
Yeah, they do.
So you're talking if there was a curb or border of our street. I'm allowed to cut twelve feet into the curb or ten feet into the curb, for example.
Yes, but we don't have curbs. You don't have curves, but if we had enacted like a storm system in place, right, that's where you're. That's where yours, we call it the apron, you have to get a right-of-way permit in order to access your property. From the right of way, so it does get knocked, because we don't have sidewalks.
But technically, I could cut in a ten-foot driveway, not have a garage and have a. Giant gravel lot that I could park ten cars on.
Yeah, we were gonna cut this lot in gravel. Okay, see if we can do a vote on this.
Yeah.
Or, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, because. Definitely, I think a driveway. Has an access. It's a method of ingress, egress to the designated parking spot. Be that a garage or. Yeah, whatever it is. Uh, so for instance, a person has a double garage. Then they need enough issues to get two cars even out.
But you'd have to have. Twelve feet and a pad across the front of the garage where you drove in and did this to go one side of the garage? Drove this and did the other side. It couldn't be wide enough that two cars could drive into the garage at the same time.
At the same time.
Correct.
That's true, that's true, the way it is today too, it's just we're talking about two feet less.
Unless you have a larger than fifty foot. Lot.
If you had a hundred-foot lot, you'd get two twelve-foot driveways. Or one twenty-four foot, I think it was, or twenty-five foot.
You, you'd have one twenty-five.
But that's not how it is today, is it?
Well, you have to.
They have some pine ridge on, they've got a bunch of double garages. Wide enough driveways to be able to go in and out.
Again, speak to Pine Ridge, I wasn't here when that was permitted, so.
Okay.
So would Mike's driveway be permitted?
If, if his lot is wider than fifty feet?
Yes.
Okay, if it's, that's what I said, if it's wider, it's fifty or wider.
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the intent behind this. As I understand it, is to, is to just prefer more space for housing to be on. And create the opportunity for that by reducing. Or reducing the driveway width from its current twelve feet. Of all its glorious exceptions, which may occur in different parts of town, and um shifting that to ten. So it's a question of how the space is dedicated, that's the spirit of it, so uh Brad, you know, let's just try it.
No.
Okay, so I'm, I'm remembering Marcy's um. Design and, and yes.
Yes. I'm on the fence at the moment, so let's keep going.
Just gotta clarify, because.
Go ahead, Brad.
Two different justifications, one, two, and three, one was to create more space for housing, one was to. Create more and it's keeping, so make sure you got. To rationale through, so.
Both can be true at the same time.
Both can cruise down.
Aaron. See, I guess maybe, you know, again, I wanted to. Fix what's not broken, if. If I have a lot in town and I'm intent to build a. Middle housing, I'm gonna have a small driveway. But if I have a town and I have no interest in building. You know what's the two-foot difference? I don't know why, why there's a public interest in taking away. Two feet of private. Uh, if I'm gonna use the lot. Single-family house, so I. I just uh. I hope, and I think that these are both uh. Limited uh. Attempts to develop policy to promote middle housing, obviously, other parts of this puzzle are much more. Uh, significant attempts, so on this, these two little ones, we'll jump ahead. This first little.
It's a preview, go ahead.
First little one, I'm gonna say no.
Okay, Tom?
Well, I'm, this one I'm gonna say no also, especially since it's a no more than. That leaves uh developers uh the discretion to have a uh smaller driveway, if that's what they prefer. Um, and we haven't talked at all about people that bring vehicles like RVs and, and. Need to uh use their driveway to plant their RV in. So that gets kind of skinny there, and I wanna give them their opportunity to use those two feet.
So that's no, okay. I'm gonna go no on that one. Okay, so we've got consensus on that one. The current twelve. Permit driveways to be located three feet from the side property line from the current five. Any clarifying questions, comments? Personal examples? All right, uh Brad, go ahead.
No.
My notes over here. Okay, Linda?
I think it, I think it supports. The middle housing concept and allows for more. More options. To enable, yes.
Okay. Am I yes on this one? Jerry?
Yeah, I'm, I wanna make sure I'm not totally inconsistent. And he gave me a yes on this, despite what I said on number two, because. Obviously, if it's permitting uh the owner to have a skinnier sidewalk. It's because he or she may. In fact, want to buy or house property. But, I mean, it does impact, is your big uh. This is uh. This is in the weeds, uh. Literally, uh. So I will say yes without strong conviction.
Okay, Tom?
Well, I, I know this isn't necessarily the point for having. A lot of discussion around this, but I haven't heard the rationale for no vote. Um, and I would tend to want to be liberal and to permit this.
I'll give you my rationale. There's a driveway next to my bedroom on the side of the house, do you want a car driving by two feet closer to your driveway? To your bedroom? Yeah, and it's not a me example, because I don't have a side drive, but I could imagine. If I have five feet from my bedroom window to a driveway and I have three, that's gonna sound different.
No, and I envision that as being a problem for uh housing that gets developed as infill housing. Um, but I just don't see that big of a difference in those two feet than I did in the two feet in the other.
So we did have somebody in one of the sessions talk about. Trying to do maintenance, getting ladders.
Yeah.
That's out of that.
Yeah, we did.
That was part of the reasoning as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm a yes on this one.
So I think we have consensus on that. You complete consensus, but close. Uh, parking pockets. So allowing parking pockets to be added to our. Parking choices in town, um, this is basically the. Horizontal space that you use on your property, it's in the, oh gosh, in the setback or. In the setback, in the right of way, it's in the setback, yeah. Is there any further discussion people wanna have on that one?
I do.
Go ahead.
People today currently park in the setback. So that's allowed. Public.
Yes.
So if we say we're gonna allow. Parking pockets, is this parking pocket dedicated to the property or is it still public access parking?
I was assuming it was dedicated to the property since it's on.
Property, people are only supposed to park in the right of way.
Year for year.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is, so if we have a twenty-foot setback.
It wouldn't be within the setback.
But what's the right of way?
The right of way is, depends on where you are, but it's usually about eight, ten feet in front. On the other side of pavement, if you have pavement in your property. It varies throughout the.
Okay, so this is one of the setback, clear.
Yeah.
But I, you raised a good point, because I. I think uh. A pocket uh parallel parking spot in your setback. In effect, takes some, in, I don't know, seems like in most cases, it's gonna take away. A otherwise available parking space, at least during the day, in the right of way.
No. So I think people in the setback, people park in your setback. When they really shouldn't be, and they're.
But if the, if the second, if the pocket part, parking spot is parallel to the. House, it's also parallel to the street.
Right.
Correct, so wouldn't it be right next? Wouldn't it be right next to a chunk of right of way?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all right with me, um, except if we're putting more pressure on the right of way for uh on-street parking. Uh, we better be careful about. You know, taking away uh parking spaces in the right of way.
I think Marcy can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the design standards would be that you would still be able to. On the right of way. Parallel.
You could have a pocket spot and a right-of-way person parking, I could sign you in parallel.
Yeah.
It sounds like double parking, but uh in the city.
Well, but you're not in the city, you're here in our village. Let me just, cause I can remember a diagram, we don't have it for any of us, but remember diagram where it's just showing. Being able to go in to a parking place that's running parallel to the front of your house. And getting out of it, but the in, getting in and getting out does not preclude somebody from parking in this space here, which is, I think.
Is the landscaping, is that part of the division between?
There's required landscaping between parking pockets, and there's a limit to the number of parking pockets on a lot. So there would be space for parallel parking on the street. Even if you had a parking pocket and a driveway on your lot. There's still space left over because of the dimensional standards that we built into this rule.
We're gonna get into the details of the landscaping to go, but if we need to, we will. So um, let me start with Tom this time, so Tom, where are you on this?
So I, I'm having a. Hard time understanding why. This is an issue, um. I mean, uh, so going forward. Uh, my understanding is, is that certainly in this kind of an instance, we're gonna be. Jealous, more jealously guarding the right of way, so that people understand that. Um, the right of way is for street parking. And, and, and so there's the part of me that wants to make it, you know, conditional that the. Right of way somehow ends up being a part of um. A developer's plan to make sure that we clear, that we have a clear understanding of where the right of way ends and the. Then the line, the lot line. Uh, ends. Um. And then you're talking about putting a parking, parking pocket into that uh setback zone. Um. But the. Landscaping requirement isn't to buffer the, the. Right of way from the parking pocket, it's to buffer it from the driveway?
No, from the car that's parked in the right of way, chasing the. To the pocket part.
It's to keep you from having a higher front of your lot devoted to parking pockets. It limits the number of parking pockets that you can put on your lot. So you can't, your whole front setback can't be parking pockets after parking pockets, you are limited to a number.
Yeah.
On the width of your lot, and then you have to have landscaping in between them.
I think the confusion is people are working in the setbacks and they shouldn't be. Today, that's why when you try to envision it, you're like, people are already doing this, correct?
Well, that depends on what street you're thinking about, yeah. But we can't, we can't and shouldn't let that perfection on that prevent us, and even putting a condition on that. That everybody understands that in the city to do this, right? We can just say that. If we approve this and there are addition, or additional. Concerns or things that come up as a result of confusion about where the. Where your property ends and what you, where you're allowed to park or not, then we have to deal with, it's not a reason to. To me, it's not a reason to say yes or no, the point of this in my mind was. To give somebody a different option for how they cite parking.
Right.
There only, if you're, if I'm building a new house on a new lot or a lot that's been cleared. And I'm required to have a spot. This gives me a different place to put it, if I don't wanna create a garage, if I don't wanna use space on the side for a driveway, it's, it's just another option.
And thinking along those lines, then I'd say yes.
I wasn't trying to uh.
No, I just.
Okay.
The right vision in my head of what that is.
Yeah, but this, this one's weird, because on the one hand, we're trying to get. Okay. It, this was.
Excuse me, I said yes.
I know, I know, I just. Think better of it, okay, Jerry?
Yes.
I'm a yes on this one, Linda. Okay, Brad?
Yes, anything to add additional off-street parking?
Okay, yes. Okay. Yeah, we're, we're in there, so uh. Next couple of things, the next thing is, so we, we're doing this, so it's not really for us to vote on it, but one of the requirements. Is to incorporate clear and objective large-city model code design for cottage clusters and townhouses. And the location of main entrance, but we're required to do that and that's. Basically saying it has to be clear, so we're not gonna vote on that. Now, here's a uh. Interesting set of things, um, and Bert talked to this earlier. These are the manzanita specific minimum level of design to be required. I mean, it includes, which you talked about facade articulation. I don't have the numbers for garage setback on here, can somebody remind me?
But wasn't this.
We already do that?
You have a fifty-foot wide lot, you have to pick two of these items, if you have a. Hundred-foot wide lot, you have to pick four items.
Yes.
Two per fifty feet.
Yeah, Marcy, oh, thank you. Fifty feet. Marcy, could you walk through that?
Don't you wanna do it, Bert? But I can, yes.
I'm hoping you can do it.
Um, yeah, sorry, let me pull it up.
In terms of the number of, uh, we have a sheet in front of us and it shows uh. Five items. Uh, facade articulation, garage setback, windows, eyes on the street, landscaping in clustered parking areas. Pedestrian access and accessibility. Those are identified as the manzanita specific minimum level of design to be required on every dwelling. And I, I believe that uh the. Guidelines you proposed are different than what this list identifies.
Correct. Uh, we have some additional ones that have to do with transitional space. Detailed design.
We were saying deck as one of these, I don't know the doctor.
That's one of the options.
Um.
Okay, so look, so, okay, so these are, we got more items to add to this list, the. So let's do that now then, so in addition to the five. That are here, we've got something called transitional space. We haven't talked about that, so I don't know what that is, but we'll get to it, are there others?
So, this is just kind of complicated, um. But we have some that apply to cottage clusters, they're required to apply to cottage clusters, they have to do with. Pedestrian circulation in and around the common area. And off-street parking and getting landscaping into the shared parking areas, so. Think classic cottages, shared parking. What we did here was we applied those. To any housing that has a uh shared. Parking area, so it could apply to this uh attached cottage cluster, uh AKA courtyard apartment. Which we may be required. Which we may be required allowed to do. Uh, it won't be an extra thing under twenty-one thirty-eight. Um, but we did it willingly here. We did it not because it was required, but because we wanted to. We are applying it not just clusters, but to any housing that has a cluster kind of a configuration.
And that's everything you've just said is applying to the item called transitional space. Correct? Or is that true for every item we have on here?
No, um, so let me just go through the ones that are kind of extra. Transitional space is a new standard.
Okay.
It's new, not required. Um, pedestrian circulation and off-street shared parking are things that apply to cottage clusters, but we apply them to other housing. That has internal shared courtyards also.
Okay. And then do eyes on the street? And facade articulation. Apply to all housing?
Yes, from one plex to the highest order middle housing.
Okay.
If you remember one of the sessions, I gave the example of someone decided to build. Fifty feet of garage or fifty feet of house. You'd be staring at a blank wall or garage doors. So this would require.
Mm-hmm.
A window up there.
I also remember Brad.
A window here and a window here instead of just. Sign of the house or at least have two.
Hmm.
Um, Brad, you also provided an example at that time of, say, if you had, if you didn't have. Uh, entries facing the street. If you didn't have that requirement, you might have entries on an inside wall. Um, and blank wall facing the street. So there's.
Two two structures with walls and you walked between them to inner houses. This would mean one of these would have to be on those blanks facing the street.
Okay. Is this one we could just do in one? Bell swoop? That would be my recommendation.
I think so.
I'm not sure um that you've articulated it. Properly, Catherine, to be required on every building. Um. And I think it's more to multiple. Um. Falling unit buildings.
Just to all of them.
Single fan, single unit.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's a little confusing, so let's just make sure we're clear. Because when Marcy was talking a few minutes ago, particularly about the transitional space.
Right.
That had to do with um with the housing types that have shared parking areas. So that does not apply. To everything, or did I misunderstand you?
And yeah, can I explain what transitional space is about? Because it's different.
Yes.
Then. Yes, it is. It's for dwellings that are closer to the front setback than they normally might be, like ten feet. Um, rather than twenty feet. It's to make sure that there is some separation, some layering of landscaping. Um, either vertically or horizontally between the back of the sidewalk and the front door. So it is a totally new standard, but it's one that. I have used in a lot of settings where we're promoting the idea of housing that is closer to the back of the sidewalk.
Which we don't have. So that's where it's kind of harder to for us to visualize it here. And not having that. So. So what was the feeling of the planning commission on this one then to? You have a strong feeling for it, or do you?
Oh, I I I would say that the recommendations that Marcy and her team made were appropriate if we're trying to keep Manzanita. Manzanita. And without these in in place. It's uh. Less likely that the character and scale. Of uh our city will be more like the village. And this is just one additional tool. Uh, this set of design guidelines that helps in that.
So for an example, if we pretended this storage unit was a house. It doesn't have any of these. So we're looking at a garage door and.
You can build a house like that.
Yeah.
No.
So you could build a house like that. I would prefer to see one with a window or a deck landscaping.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'm I'm not against it.
I'm just trying to show I'm just trying to give examples. Yeah.
So um, Tom, is there anything else we should get further clarification on before? Taking a vote and what I would say is intentional being just say. These are the combination of things that the planning commission. Looked at and came up with to give people. To give people options, but also to make some requirements of of making. Particularly the front of the house, just less than a blank, more than a blank wall. Yeah.
And the and the understanding is. Right, two of these per fifty feet of front lot space you have. So there's this. Marcy can explain. There's a specific detail that. And um it needs this. You have. Yeah. In those. Parts. Oh, yes.
Okay.
I'm having.
Yes.
I'm hearing everything that Bert is Bert you're saying. Can you just repeat that?
In the. There's a list of. In those.
Did you catch that, Marcy?
Oh, sorry.
He said there's a list of requirements. And that there are options within that list of requirements to meet those requirements. Use the requirements one more time.
Almost all of these is a menu that you can choose from. So there are. There are many easy ways to meet it. You don't have to provide more than. Um, a certain number for a certain linear width of of foot of facade.
It's correct. You just want to bring that up because he was so unfavorable. Yeah, so you did pare down from some of the things that might have been interesting. Yeah. Good. So we've got Tom as a yes, Jerry?
Okay. Okay.
Hey. This is this is a yes for me, and I'm simply on this one, just deferring to. The the time that went into this and the. The expertise that went into differentiating based on the type of house and situation. So I think that's uh. I think that's way above my pay grade, so I'm gonna I'm trusting the planning commissions work on that. Say yes, Linda?
I'm yes for the same reasons. You just said yes.
Brad?
Yes.
All right. So we have a consensus on that. So the two items we have before we go to zoning, the two items we have. Uh, we might have some strong feeling, not feeling, opinion to work out is the three thousand square feet. Um. Requirement. And then the reduced front setback, which may. May not have as much. Divergence, but has some. So uh, okay. So. The zoning. And I'm mindful of time, so I want to want to just start and see. How much work we have to do here or if we're. Clear is if it's going to be a lot of discussion on it. I'm not sure um this is the time to continue, but if it's a shorter discussion based on all prior work, then. You can tackle it. So basically, hopefully it's the latter, but if it's the former, then they're going to take the time. It's been the it's been the guideline all around. So now we're back to the large handout where we're looking at the before and after maps for the. The names and numbering for our um zoning. And what's proposed to be allowed. And basically, we're good at making language changes to to shift to middle housing oriented language, middle housing one, middle housing two. And middle housing three. Middle housing two used to be the more um. Now I'm not going to do the comparisons now, so we're making those changes. And on here, and again, I'd like to know if.
Just ignore me.
Okay. Hold this camera. We have on the chart is what's proposed to be allowed and ready. I can see we may have a challenge with townhouses because the. Lot size of fifteen hundred square feet or later is referred to here. So let me back up and just say, do counselors have? Like a general questions or concerns they want to express about the new zoning and what's proposed to be allowed? So we made a broad question first, Brad?
I just want to clarify that the difference between MH one, MH two, the only difference was. Four connected townhouses versus two sets of double connected towns.
Correct. Yeah.
And my question would be, why are we differentiating that between M two and M one?
So do we need that distinction, given where state law is headed? And and why would that be?
Uh, the state law question, I can maybe kick that to Marcy, but I think the original intent of having two connected. Is based on the kind of historical lot size pattern in MH one, which represents the older part of the town. And. One of the first things that Marcy did was site studies of the entire city. And that came out pretty clear that those lot sizes tended to be smaller than our minimum lot size of five thousand. So it was intended to keep. In scale with the rest of that here. You don't know about the. Question related to twenty-one thirty-eight.
Yeah.
I don't think twenty-one thirty-eight is going to change the ability for for towns to uh. Choose a different number of townhouses that can be connected. I think that will still remain a choice.
It is or it is not going to change that?
It won't. I don't believe it will. I think it will still be a choice on city's part to limit the number of townhouses that are. Uh, required to be attached for different areas for contextual reasons. I'm sorry, was that not clear? I'm just looking at people's facial expressions and thinking it's more explanation necessary.
Well, I think the 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 sort of common sense question would have been, maybe you've just answered it. If the only thing differentiating. MH one from MH two in terms of what's proposed to be allowed. Is how many townhouses been can be created.
Connected.
Connected, excuse me. Well, you just said that's not going to change based on the new state laws. So there is a distinction. That's a difference, and that's the reason, and that's the difference. Between MH one and MH two. And to to roll in Leila's earlier comment. The reason, one of the reasons those. Zones were created the way they were is you were looking at in general what the lot sizes were in an MH one. And in MH one, they're generally smaller and they're somewhat larger in MH two. But everything that we've talked about in terms of what's allowed is specific to lot size. So if you're in, if I understand it right, if you're in the MH one and you have to have and you. Have happened to have a lot that's unusually large, it's not dependent on whether you're in MH one. It's what the lot size is as to what you can develop there.
Well, the distinction would be, so yes, um, but you could only have two. So if you want, if you had a lot that was big enough to accommodate. Um. Four townhomes. They could not all four be connected. If it would be two and two.
Yeah. So that's the distinction, really. It's not as much of a distinction as we used to have between like. The R.
The R four.
Yeah.
And the R two.
Yeah. And the other thing then in MH three, that is set up separately because it is. It used to be our SRR zone and there are uses there that have to. That are allowed, that have to stay allowed and can't be changed. And that's a broader use than what we're allowing in MH one or MH two.
That's correct.
Okay, right. So are there any questions or concerns that council would have about accepting the the zones as they've been described?
Yeah, I just I have one question.
What?
So we refer through now. This document to all zones, but all zones means all residential zones.
Yes, correct. Yeah, we're not talking about the commercial zone here. Thank you for clarifying that. Yes. Really?
I would. Rather see connectability and number of townhouses based on lot size than zone.
Well, that means you don't agree with this proposal.
Correct.
Hmm.
Maybe.
With Brad or? Love.
This is.
It's five forty-seven. We've been asked to make sure they're okay. Yeah, I'm I'm fine with the zones as they're. Here.
Yes, I think we. Have not quite reached the simplicity that I've been choosing for.
Yeah.
I just I do. I thought I understood speech said. What the division was. Closing that all middle housing types here in the commercials. To make the case.
Awesome.
Okay.
It's again. I thought we were required to allow all housing types in the commercial zone.
Is it? Residential.
Lucy, can you clarify that? Any lot that is residential zone is required for us to. The commercials of. Respinch.
Is that Bert? Having a hard time hearing you, Bert. Um, do Leila, do you mind paraphrasing that question? Is this about the commercial zones or are we still talking about the residential zones?
Yes. All housing types in all resident, all residential zones. The commercial zone currently allows respinch and question, I think, of council is, does that mean whole house? See the commercial zone?
It does, yes.
Marcy, I'm going to ask you to uh tell me what. Chapter one B twenty-five, the model code means. Which addresses specifically what the phrase zone for residential use means. Do you have the do you have the model code in front of you?
So that kind of feels like a question just sort of dropped in. So do you want to give some context for it?
Me?
Yeah.
All right, sure.
Yeah, why you're asking and what the what the connection is with what our discussions are.
Well, I think that, you know, the. Term zone for residential use is clearly defined by the model code. And I think it excludes our commercial zone. So I just want to. Either be convinced otherwise or. Confirmed that that is the definition in the code.
Yes, um, so I did just to double check my work because in preparation for this question. I sent a query to Hapo and DLCD and. I would just like to summarize what it says. It just came through. The other day. Okay, so in mixed-use areas, middle housing. There are three criteria that you have to meet for it to be a a zone that allows that is required to allow middle housing. It has to be defined in the comprehensive plan as a residential zone. And and you do, you do define this zone as having commercial use and residential use. It also has to um. Right, it has to be primarily residential zoning district based on purpose and allowed uses, and you do allow already residential uses in the zone. And it has to allow single-family detached as a permitted use. So all those three facts are true for your commercial zone. Therefore, it it is a zone.
What was the middle one? What was the middle one?
There's no minimum. I didn't mention a minimum.
No, this is the second.
Second.
The second of the three you just went through.
I saw the second was it has to be primarily a residential zoning district based on purpose and allowed use of. Allowed uses. So the purpose statement does state that it's for residential uses in addition to commercial uses.
Do you think it's primarily for residential uses?
I think she's saying it can be either or.
Yeah, in the purpose, in the purpose statement, it says it's for for residential and commercial uses.
Marcy, is it? An interpretation. Of the former language for the rural language because the new law has changed it.
I don't know what the new law says about commercial.
Residential use is now becoming any lot or parcel in a residential zone. So the language has changed, and I don't know which one you're interpreting.
Okay.
Definition, residential zone is residential zone, and commercial zone is commercial.
But. Allows residential.
Yeah, we have residential use. We've had it. We have single family, single unit homes on Lanita. We we haven't, so.
Right, that doesn't mean it's a residential zone.
No, but Jerry's question isn't whether it's a residential zone. I think Jerry's question is just to confirm, do, are we required to allow all housing types in what is called our commercial zone, which actually is a combination of commercial and residences. And the answer I'm hearing from what Mercy has just said is yes.
That's how I'm too.
If if you'd like to, I can pull this email up and share it and we can read it together. It sounds like there's enough concern about in potential misinterpretation that that might be something you want.
I'm the only one with the concern. I would like to talk to the author of the email.
You you would like me to pull up the email? Okay.
No, it sounds like I may be the only one with the concerns.
You raised it as a concern and now I just, you know. This raises a concern, but I realize I've been making an assumption and I'd like to know that that assumption is correct. My assumption in the commercial zone, which has not been part of our discussion, we've been focused on the the residential only zones. My assumption in the commercial zone has been in the past, we've had different housing types and people have lived and used homes on that street for a long time. And that by being required to allow all types of all these new housing types, that that would apply for the commercial zone as well as the residential zone. So if I can get a solid that is true, then I'm comfortable voting on it. But if that's not the case, then I
That is true. That is true, and it's confirmed in this Hapo DLCD letter. And to the whomever, I think it was Tom, who was asking for clarification about twenty one thirty eight, it does reference twenty one thirty eight. So it's saying confirming that twenty one thirty eight also keeps this, this uh or maybe even extends this requirement for middle housing in your commercial zone.
So what I'd like to suggest on this one, um, I don't want to, I'm not going to recommend we go through an email together with this stage in the proceedings. You're confident of it, Leila's confident of it, but I would like everybody to have a chance to look at it. So can you forward that on to uh us? And we will take a look at it. And if there's further questions or details we need to work out, we can, rather than doing it now, see Tom and then or forehead.
So my question then is, if any of these housing types are eligible to be built in the commercial zone. And in the commercial zone, you don't have to be waiting list in an STR license. Uh conceivably, you can build a multi-unit dwell building in the commercial zone and be immediately eligible for STR.
Well, as long as it meets the conditions of town three. Which have parking requirements, ownership requirements.
If you had a six-unit building all by one person, only one of those can be STR, not six. Those rules are the same in residential area.
They're regulated outside of the the land use ordinance.
Could you bring it up? Because usually has that question, so that's good.
Okay.
Okay, Bert, you want to say something?
Well, I just uh, it's discussed by a few of the commission members, that the commercial zone really needs to be and I think a hint of your, it's a very small area. And uh for it to be devoted to projects that don't have mixed use nature to them. It gives long-term nature to it. So as you not expand pertinences like it's required, it's the nature of the zone. But I would suggest that nature is like
Okay, good point. That's enough to crack in future time. Okay, alright. Okay, so Leila? Yes, I'm going to ask you, referring to his staff. Do you have enough information from the session tonight to go forward? With the exception of the additional conversation we need to have on the reduced front setback and the three thousand square foot.
Yeah, and unfortunately, my computer died, so I don't have my list of things where there was a four one. But if I just get council to clarify, do you want staff to go ahead and make those changes to the ordinance? Yes, okay, so the ones where there's four one, yes.
Yeah.
Ones that are three two, we will leave as is.
Yes, I think there are only two there, just two, the reduced front setback and the three thousand square foot.
And then would your plan then be to basically the next time you talk about, I'm sorry, my back's killing me. Um, would your plan be to the next time you meet to discuss this, have it as a first reading in a public hearing? Or should we schedule another work session once um, Marcy has had a chance to have, has had a chance to update the ordinance language? I guess procedurally, I want to, what you guys want to do next.
Well, what makes sense based on timing? Yeah.
I think what I, can I offer a recommendation? Marcy can tell me yes or no, but I think staff should proceed with everything but those two items.
Yeah.
Right, there's a lot we can do. That's quite, that's sort of the meat of it, the meat and potatoes. And then I will confer with Marcy to see if we will have that ready. It won't be legally reviewed or gone to DLCD. But I think Marcy, do you think it's, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but um do you think it's conceivable to have a draft for the next work session, which would be September ninth? Yeah, conceivable. So we'll get it as far as we can.
Okay.
And then share that with you.
So then would you recommend that we use the nine nine work session to also then hit the two things that are unresolved?
So we'll do both. Yeah, and then what we can do is send off at least those changes for review. Um, let you deliberate further on that. And ideally, the package that we bring you um when you're ready for first reading, the materials are ready for first reading, will be as complete as they can be, subject to any other changes you may decide. I want to say too, procedurally, I just want to start getting it out there into the world that my recommendation would be to repeal ninety five five and just replace it with this new. There's so many changes in it at this point. I'm going to recommend that for the land division as well. Um, but I think we just repeal and replace, yeah. So I think that makes the most sense. And then I think based on that, you are able to reach consensus in September.
I will.
I I don't presume anything there. That I think you would likely have a first reading in, you know. Just giving us enough time to fine tune everything, get it to DLCD, get it to legal, and then have that ordinance all cleaned up. So what you'll see is just a clean, brand new ordinance. You won't see the red line strike out.
That's great. So did we actually vote on this?
Yeah.
We did.
Oh, did everyone vote?
I haven't.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brad, no, Linda, yes, Catherine, yes, Jerry, yes. And Miss Tom.
To which one did?
Just the map. The map, as it is.
Well, I except for Looking at the very clear, plain language of code, uh definition of zone for residential use. I need to be convinced that I'm reading it wrong. It could be, but perhaps I am. And on that issue alone, I'm hold out because we're putting a lot of cars on the street anyway, you look at it, we already have cars on the street, the commercials, I don't see any reason to care to that. And as I think uh you suggested, we should treat our commercials as a commercial zone, the greatest extent we can. And you know, if we really are going to be welcoming in new uh residents, let them enjoy the residential districts where we don't want force them to, you know, live on the So I I don't know, maybe we're only talking about one or two projects tops in that zone, but I don't see this.
So you're no.
No, I'm not.
This is
Just no on the, want to be using the term all zones to include the
And I, I'm the same mind as Jerry.
All we're asking is consolidation of the currently residential zones. I think you're asking for additional clarification on the applicability of the middle housing types to the commercial district.
Correct, correct.
So those are separate things. So as it relates to the consolidation of the residential zones, what's your feeling on that? Because I'm marketing this, my computer's dead, so.
Yeah, we had, we agree else.
Yes.
So, so we've got okay, so do we um hang on for everybody's packed and run it out the door? So we've got a follow-up item then around to confirm to anybody's satisfaction what the implications are for the commercial zone. But that's known enough to stop going forward with mapping and approving that as it's been presented. So, okay, and we've asked Marcy to send the language that you're getting from the same folks to us. So I'm going to add that as a third item if we need to still clarify and discuss it when we get together in our next work session. So that'll be three items for discussion as well as a review of the draft that's going to come back with the changes we've talked about today.
And so what are the implications of that for the commercial zone? Would be something I'd be interested in.
Okay, well, we can discuss it once everybody's confident that that's
Yes, right.
Think the the bigger implication is what Jerry's brought up, which is we may want to consider being more of a pure commercial zone rather than a mix of commerce and residence there, but that's for further discussion and doesn't relate to.
That's what I was hearing. Yes.
Yeah, it's not for here.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea.
Dying to pick up the gavel now. So hey, listen, I mean, it it's hard. You know, sporting analogies, it's hard to get that last hundred yards across the finish line. And that's about the time when a lot of people stumble. They lose their patience, they lose their sense of humor. Please don't let that happen. And we miss details, so everybody stayed very attentive. And I really appreciate that, even when things have got a little, we get hot about stuff, we're all, we all have our moments of that. But I really appreciate how council has stuck with it. I appreciate the fact that planning commissioners came and we had Karen. Which your girl who took a seat as far from us. Yeah, so um, and I really want to thank Marcy and and Leila for continuing on this, on this path. So it's, it's taken a lot of help at one year, but in a lot of cases, when we get to the vote, going to be very solid. And we're going to be able to explain to anybody who comes up and says, why the heck did you vote for such and such? And we'll be grounded in that. And that's really important in this. And then when planning commission members want to be on council someday, they can also Yeah. Okay.
So adopt everything.
Yeah, on that friendly note, I'm going to end this meeting and thank you everybody very much. It's six oh five.